Good evening, I'm going to call the Select Board meeting to order for Monday, October 28th, 2024, and announce that we will be going into executive session and we will not return before 6:00 PM for a regular session. Can I get a motion, please?
Madam Chair, item A, I move pursuant to master and law, chapter 38, section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation in the Port Restaurant versus Anaheim, which matters, as the Chair has declared, that an open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town.
Second.
I'll in favor. Pete?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, five zero.
More power there.
More power to you.
When you come back and yours is unplugged, you know.
I'm going to call the Select Board meeting back to order. We were in executive session earlier this evening, and it took some action that will not be disclosed at this time. As required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping, as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting must notify the Chair prior to the start of the meeting. Hearing nobody, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we get started in public comment this evening, I would just like to ask everybody for a moment of silence in honor of Shannon and Maggie Hubbard, and to offer our deepest condolences and sympathies to the Hubbard and Waldron families. Thank you. Now for public comment and announcements, Monday, who's, Pete, sorry.
Item A, Madam Chair, Monday, November 11, 2024, at 10:30 AM, a Veterans Day ceremony at Evergreen Cemetery. And item B, do you want to take this one?
If you want to tag out, absolutely.
Sure.
Thank you. So a final reminder that tomorrow evening at the Community Center will be the Harwich Community Engagement Forum. This is regarding the wastewater Phase 3A planning in anticipation of construction. So we're encouraging everyone to attend tomorrow night, October 29th, at 6:30 PM, at the multipurpose room in the Community Center. And there will be discussions about the planning for Phase 3A, which will be wastewater construction in and around the area of Great Sand Lakes near Queen Anne and Harwich. Representatives from the town and GHD Engineering will be there. And again, this has also been posted as a board meeting for the board to have any discussion. So all are invited. Thank you.
Thank you. And presentations, the three-year plan update from Cape Light Compact, Maggie?
Do you want to do the rest of the public?
Oh, sorry, Dave, you sat down.
That's okay. David Blank, Fire Chief, just, I'm sure everybody's aware that the brush fires have been happening off Cape. In unusual set of circumstances, last Saturday, the entire Commonwealth was in a red flag warning, which usually doesn't happen. We never usually get that dry down here. The state, both MEMA and the DCR, which is the Department of Conservation Recreation and the Department of Fire Service, have just issued a caution to everybody to, you know, limit your outside fires, to control your ashes, to just make sure you're very careful. These conditions we anticipate are going to last through the end of the week. There's no meaningful rainfall in the forecast, and it's going to take three or four days of meaningful rainfall to actually put these fires out. So if you saw any of the footage today, the chief in Middleton basically said that they're not going to put it out. It's going to be like this. They've contained it, and they're just going to let it burn out because they can't put it out. It's just, it's that much burning, it's burning that deep into the brush. So just a reminder to everybody, just to be extra careful, and if you don't need to have a fire pit or have a cigar outside, make sure you put the, put it out, or whatever you're, whatever you're doing, so.
It's a good reminder, thank you.
Okay.
Sorry. Carol and Carrie, Community Center Director, and I just wanted to quickly promise, go through November's events. The first is we are having a Thanksgiving art contest. There are three different age groups, and everything is due in for November 25th. All the rules and regulations are there, because I promised I'd go fast. Our spaghetti supper, which is free for anyone, just drop in, you don't need to make reservations, November 7th, at 5:30 to 7:00 PM. There's always trivia and prizes to be given out as well. We are excited to partner with the Harwich Fire Department and do a CPR training class. It is filling up so fast, these just came out, and we are more than halfway full. So we are more than appreciative to the Harwich Fire Department, who always make sure that we're all safe. We appreciate them. November 14th, that was on November 13th, November 14th, we're doing a beach glass tree workshop. So I'm just mentioning these, you can find them all. And back by popular demand, slime! November 15th, at 6:30 in the Community Center. Then we're doing, in conjunction with a few other departments, the Health Department and the Council on Aging, Thanksgiving food safety for seniors. That will be on November 18th. On November 22nd, we are doing our Up Up Away, the Mad Science Program. This is another popular one, everyone seems to love, so no signups, you can just come on over. Then we'll be making Corn Husk Figures, if I'm saying that right, on November 26th. So those are what's happening, and then if I could just quickly remind everyone that on Monday, November 4th, the Community Center is closed in preparation for the election, and the building is closed on the 5th, except for the election, but no other functions will be happening in the Community Center, November 4th and 5th. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, I'm Ginny Hewitt from Brooktree Library. I just have a couple announcements, too. With Halloween coming up this week, on Thursday, we will have our annual Halloween Parade to Town Hall. It starts at 10:30 with a storytime and the, and some songs, and then we'll parade over to Town Hall. So there's a lot of babies and toddlers, a few older preschoolers, so they're especially adorable in their costumes, and even community members without children might want to stop by out here outside of Town Hall if you want an overload of sweetness that is non-fatening. You can see the little hits in their costumes. And I want to thank the Town Hall staff who welcome us every year, and especially this year, I want to thank Town Clerk Emily Mitchell for working with us. We're trying to minimize the impact on early voting, so we have a special route through the building to avoid that as much as possible. On Halloween night, this is the second year we're doing an outdoor trick-or-treating in our spooky upper parking lot. It's not all that spooky, but it's a little darker than the regular parking lot, so it's spooky to the little kids, and we decorate. And we have a lot of, we have some giveaways and a snack and some games that the kids can play. And then I want to mention a couple things going on for adults. Our pen, sorry, pen, pad and prompt writing series just restarted, and this is led by Ann Tucker on Thursday nights at 6:30. This is not a traditional writers' group where people share their works in progress and get criticism on it. This is, everyone works from a prompt, and it's meant to, it just helps people improve their writing skills. So it's open to anyone, any level of writing experience or no experience. On Friday is another session of our first Friday Poetry Series at 2:00 PM, and this has been coordinated by Marietta Nelson, and she has arranged a different poet every month to be the featured speaker. And then finally, I wanted to mention on Sunday, November 3rd, the Friends of Brooktree Library have the next session of their first Sunday series, and this month is a concert by Bourbon Sunset. And so the event is free, no admission charge, and 2:00 PM, and light refreshments is always served. Thank you.
Thank you, Ginny. Anybody else have a comment and announcement? Okay, now we'll go on to Maggie.
Madam Chair, if I could, our first presenter is Maggie Downey from the Cape Light Compact. She'll be presenting on the latest from Cape Light Compact. Turn it over to Maggie.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, it's nice to be here. And also with me is Brianna Kane. Brianna Kane is the Implementation Manager for the Energy Efficiency Programs. So all the hard questions I get to punt to Brianna because she's responsible for running the residential and managing the residential and commercial energy efficiency programs. So it's nice to be here, thank you. I know you have a very... Trying to advance the slide, pressing the button on the right. So what, oops, whoop. There we go. So just a reminder for those in the audience who the Cape Light Compact is, Cape Light Compact is a joint powers entity that was formed by the 15 towns on the Cape and the six towns in the Vineyard, back, I date myself back in 1996 and 1997, and then we reorganized as a joint powers entity under the 2016 Municipal Modernization Act. We provide a power supply option for customers. Basically, we negotiate the terms and condition of a contract for customers on an opt-out basis. We run 99% of our time, and staff are devoted to running the energy efficiency programs. We also advocate for consumers by participating in different Department of Public Utilities proceedings. Just wanted to do a quick highlight reminder, we operate on a calendar year, not the fiscal year, so we're just, we're getting ready to close out 2024. So our 2023 report is out, and in 2023, we had over almost 1,300 residents and businesses participate in the Energy Efficiency Program in that year, and we returned and reinvested $1.6 million in incentives to residential and commercial customers here in Harwich. Just quick highlights that are happening now, we're continuing to offer a very successful home energy assessment, which provides weatherization, cover up to 100% for all customers. We also have a very successful income-eligible program on our website or calling us or stopping by, you can find that information on the income thresholds to find out where, what's the best program for you to meet your needs. So 75, if you're a market rate customer, meaning you're not income or moderate, and moderate income or low income, we cover 75% of the cost of, for market rate customers. We also have a very popular heat pump program, where we have a $10,000 rebate for whole home heat pumps, as well as a per ton rebate for a partial. That usually equates to about $4,000 to $5,000 if you're just doing partial for your home. You would be doing that for maybe shoulder heating or, and/or cooling and dehumidification through, through heat pumps. We also have tons of other rebates available for customers. We are available always at our offices or by the phone to walk customers through. I'll touch on these briefly. We have a very successful, it's fully subscribed now, e-bike incentive program. We got a grant from the Massachusetts Clean Energy Center for low and moderate income to offset the cost of an e-bike so that they have a form of transportation. We also ran our CVO program, which is now coming to an end, was fully subscribed. And as I said earlier, we have significantly, we have rebates for room air conditioners, purifiers, dehumidifiers, as well as electric clothes dryers. So there's lots of information on our website and available for staff. So I'm going to roll into a little bit what we're doing in the next three-year plan by starting to talk about a new program called the Energy Saver Home Loan Program. This is, these are federal funds that came to the Massachusetts Climate Bank, and the Cape Light Compact saw the RFP, applied for an RFP. We are the concierge service provider. And what that means is, we are here to facilitate, answer questions, and help customers who are interested in this program, or want to know more about this program, and even help them with their loan application if they decide to participate. So what is this program? It pairs, it kind of, it pairs very well with what we do, energy efficiency. It is targeted to low and moderate income customers, so those that make up to 135% of AMI. And if you see on the screen there, you can see the income threshold for us, Barnstable County, is $166,000. And that is the income on whosever, whomever is on the deed. So if there's one person on the deed, the income is $166,000. If there are two people on the deed, the income is $166,000. And what this is, is a, it's like a second mortgage. It is a 20-year loan. The first 18 months are just simple interest payments, and then after that, remainder is you, principal and, principal and interest. You can borrow up to, the loan, the smallest one is $10,000, goes up to $100,000 in loan sizes, and it has way more measures or things that you can do that are not covered by the Energy Efficiency Program. The interest rate, if you are under 60% of area median income, is a half a percent, so a half a percent for 20-year loan. Or if you're between 61 and 135% of AMI, your interest rate is 2%. So this is a great product for a customer who is in their, owns their home, is in need of improvements, but given the current interest rates, has been struggling to move, to move forward. And the exciting part is, is here are all the improvements, I know it's really small, so again, the best thing to do, it's on our website, is to call Cape Light Compact. We will be developing flyers, which will get to all the town halls that are out there. But this, for instance, will cover solar, roof repairs, barrier mitigation, water heating, all things that are not covered, some of the things that are not covered by the Cape Light Compact. And again, depending upon your income level, if you're under 60%, like your heating system upgrades are fully covered by the Cape Light Compact. But if you fall within that 61 to 135, this might be a very good loan product for you if you're in a home and it's leaky, you know you've been putting off heating system, or if you want to electrify, but you also want to install solar at the same time because you want to keep that overall energy bill as low as possible. You take Cape Light Compact's incentives, loan product, put them together, so that we'll walk you through, so that you have the best and most affordable way to move forward. This is brand-new, we just rolling out this fall, and I'm really excited about it. We have, I think, six residents, a few from Harwich, actually, that have contacted us with a level of, level of interest. Then the last, the second thing is, after four years, we have finally entered into a contract with the USDA, U.S. Department of Agriculture Rural Utility Service, for a solar loan program. This is not, this is based on, it's not an income-based program, you simply have to have an acceptable credit score, credit score, to the bank to get a loan. We went out to bid in Cape Cod 5, won the bid. They are, they will be servicing the loan, literally invoicing you, collecting the payments, et cetera. And this interest rate is 2.7%, which is significantly below what you can get for a market rate loan for solar, and this is a 10-year loan capped at $50,000. So again, the ability to take Cape Light Compact's incentives, whether it's 100% or just $10,000, if you want to put in a heat pump and then pair it with solar, we now have three different paths for you to, for customers to navigate. And as I said, our role here is to help customers figure out, should I do a zero-interest heat loan? Should I do the Energy Saver Home Loan Program? What's in my best interest? We'll help you, we'll sit down with you and help you figure out, we'll give you choices, because that's what this is about. So now, I'm leading into, we're heading into the 25 to 27 Energy Efficiency to Decarbonization Plan. The 22 Climate Act changed what the Cape Light Compact's responsibilities are. It used to be about, we have to save electricity, KWH, remember the CFL lighting, all about lowering your usage? Now, we have been, we are now required to decarbonize and add decarbonization into the services. The Commonwealth has, under their Global Warming Solutions Act, has set a goal of electrifying a million homes in the Commonwealth. Starting with anyone who heats with oil, propane, or still on electric resistance heat, moving them to high-efficiency heat pumps will save them money, lower their own, their overall energy burden, and keep them comfort. Gas, anyone who reads with natural gas, you can still electrify, but you're going to be upside down, because right now, due to the price of natural gas compared to electricity, you're still, for an affordability perspective, better on natural gas. But again, the goal is to decarbonize, the next three years will be heavily focused on oil, propane, electric resistance, but we do have programs for anyone who heats with natural gas as well. So again, the state's goal, direction to us, decarbonization equity. The data has supported that those customers who rent or are low and moderate income have not participated in these programs over the last 12 to 15 years at the same level as a market rate customer. So we have developed very rich incentives for low and moderate, expanding low and adding moderate income and renters incentives, which I'll get to in a second, and then also improving customer experience. I think what I've been talking about so far, Energy Saver Home Loan Program, the USDA Loan Program, and having staff that live and work in our community available to answer questions and help you navigate is the first step and the most important step to making sure we give the best customer service we can. We still will have wonderful small business enhancements, we're going to continue with the very successful Main Street. We will have a turnkey offering for small businesses that simply, you know, call the Cape Light Compact, schedule your, your business assessment, and you can have everything done literally by one vendor. You can still choose to do your own contractor, but if you just want to have the Cape Light Compact take the lead and offer some turnkey services, we are now expanding that out. We, in this plan, rolled out 100% weatherization for small businesses, which we were not able to offer for many years, so that is also a great incentive. And that, these are available regardless of whether a small business owns or rents the facility. A lot of our small Bs don't own the buildings, they're renters. But again, bringing up to 100% incentives to the table is a way to entice the landlord and also make the, lower the overall energy burden for the tenant. So what are we offering? What's different in the state for 20, coming up, for 25 to 27, for low income? And you can see the little, what looks like a clipboard, it actually means income verification. So if you are below 60% of area or state median income, you are eligible for 100% weatherization, which is air sealing and insulation, and 100% coverage for barrier mitigation. Barrier mitigation means upgrading your electric panel if needed, you could have, which could be knob and tube, you have to change it. If you have vermiculite or some mold, there are, there's funds available to help you address those things, because they prevent you from moving forward with putting in insulation if you have barriers. So there's funds available for low to moderate income, low income, and if you move over now to moderate income or renters, they are now being able to have the same. You have to self-attest, so right now, you can, starting in 2025, and actually now, you can call the Compact, say, I am, I looked at your website, I am a moderate income customer, self-attestation, and you'll be eligible 100% for weatherization. If you'd like to proceed with the other incentives, mitigate barrier mitigation or electrification, which is a heat pump, you do have to income-qualify. That's because those, those incentives are quite expensive, and we want to make sure that you are, in fact, moderate income. And you have two paths here. You can choose the turnkey path, which I taught, is very similar to the commercial path. Everything, call the Compact, we assign a vendor, and that's about all you have to do. We will navigate that for you, and that's the 100% column. If you choose to do your own contractors, you're still eligible for incentives, they're just not as rich, it's capped, it's up to 16,000. And the reason is, the turnkey allows us to control costs. We can go out to bid, again, remember, all of these programs, and I'm rambling on really fast about, are our programs. We pay for them every month in our electric bills, so it's really important to keep us, do everything that we can from a management perspective to keep costs as low as possible. And then we still, and always will, have programs for anyone that we call market rate customers, whether you rent or own. Weatherization is still 100% if you're a renter, or 75% if you're a market rate customer. So if you have $10,000 worth of air sealing and insulation that's needed, the program will pay up to 7,500. There's no cap on that, it's based on what does your actual home need for weatherization. We will also have barrier mitigation, capped at a dollar amount, and as I talked about earlier, the $10,000 whole home heat pump, and a, it's moving to a 2,000 per condenser, as opposed to a per ton for partials. Again, last thing, what we hope to tie this all together is with enhanced customer service. As I said, unlike some of the other program administrators, we have and staff a live call center, so we'll help you, if you have a high bill, you don't understand your bill, have a question about program, we're there to help you, we're there to help you navigate what programs right for you, or just to provide you information and to fact-check if you have any questions for us. The last couple of slides, we're working with, just informational, we're working with Mass CEC. $24 million of ratepayer funds will be going to Mass CEC for workforce development. I don't think it's any secret that the workforce is aging, especially in the, in the energy industry, and we really need the next generation coming up behind us, linemen, electricians, plumbers, HVAC, they are all essential to keeping us, keeping us safe in our homes and comfortable in our homes. So there is a significant investment in workforce development. We've partnered with the tech schools, both Upper Cape and Harwich Tech, on offering several programs, and are, we try to engage them as often as we, as we can. Lots of information on Mass Save Data, if you have the interest to poke around in, you know, deeper into what's happening in Harwich or on the Cape, or if you want to compare Harwich to another town, there's lots of information out there. Always marketing, there are lots of ways to participate in the program, you can always call us, sign up for our newsletter, Facebook page, Instagram, a lot of things you'll see. We do statewide with all of the other utility program administrators, and we also do a lot of local marketing here as well. The last three slides were inserted because I was requested by the Towne Yarmouth Selectmen, wanted to make sure that I had some information available on our rates, and so you can see the Cape Light Compact's rate, it is benchmarked to basic service, which is the ever-source rate. We are, right now, lower than base, than ever-source in all three categories, but I think what's the most important thing is to look at, this is the last 22 years, I'm really old, 22 years of negotiating power supply contracts. And you can see the Cape Light Compact is the green bar, and you can see, right now, we are significantly low, but it hasn't always been that case. We were caught twice back in early 200s, 2006, 2009, two hurricanes, where we were in the market, we had to procure energy, and energy was very, very expensive. But we take, we listened very closely to the direction from the Selectmen, you've benchmarked us to utilities, and we've, we changed how we procure and our procurement strategy, and we've been pretty competitive. About 70% of the time, the last 22 years, we've been below the utilities, but it's, it is about customer choice. Customers can find suppliers, you just need to make sure that you read your terms and conditions and understand what you're getting into, and we have staff on board to help you navigate that, should you decide that you want to dip your toe into the market. There, there are better deals, you just have to make sure you read fine print, because usually they're short-term, so you have to pay attention to when the contract expires. And then the last slide, just, you know, what is driving higher prices? As you can see, in the 22 years, yes, we might be lower than basic service, but everybody is paying higher prices for electricity. So just a quick, what's happening and why? When I talked about negotiating the terms and conditions of the contract, I mean, look at the left side of that slide. That's the supply side of the equation, that's what the Compact, small piece of that, is what the Compact negotiates. So there are two things that are driving up electric prices. The first is public policy. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts has made a decision to increase the amount of renewable portfolios. There are, so there are different charges that every supplier has to include in their rate. So public policy is putting upward pressure on prices, because it's not just about energy and ancillary services and turning it into a product, there are additional add-on costs. And then the second is natural gas, and that's specifically natural gas prices. In New England, primarily, electricity is produced by combined-cycle natural gas plants, and 50% of our homes are heated with natural gas. So in the winter, you have competition for a very, at the end of the pipeline, and there are, we have competition for that natural gas. So it tends to put price pressure upwards as we compete. Heating your home has a priority. Our natural gas in the winter comes in the form of LNG, Liquid Natural Gas. Liquid natural gas is a commodity, and since the war in Ukraine and lack of natural gas in Europe, we are paying, our ships, containers coming up from the south, will respond by going either to Europe, or if we want that LNG tanker to come here into Everett, we have to pay prices that are comparable to what they're paying in Europe in order to keep that LNG here. And then when you couple that with also public policy, we're paying for EV incentives, solar, smart tariffs, all of these things are built into your electric bill, and will put pricing upward. Assuming the war in Ukraine gets resolved, we should see more, so natural gas prices ease off. I do not think we'll see any new natural gas pipelines in the New England area, it's a very densely populated, incredibly difficult to sight. So that's what's driving higher prices in New England, and why it's so important to make sure that your home is in business or is energy efficient as possible, access to... Access the Cape by Compacts programs, because you're paying for them every month, if nothing else, you can, you can have the satisfaction that your home or business is in good shape and that you don't need to take any further action.
Wonderful information, a ton of it.
Sorry, I know I went fast.
No, no, it's great, and I'm wondering if we could post this on our website for easier access for, for citizens to take a look. And is there a main number you said that you can call?
It's a memory, 1-800-797-6699. Is it on my last slide? I've put everything but the phone number there, but it is 800-797-6699, right?
It is.
Oh, is it on another slide?
Ah, there we go.
Okay. No, that's great, and just so people at home know, it's wonderful information. I'll open up to board members for any questions.
Keith?
No, great presentation. My only comment, based on what you just asked the town administrators, maybe you put a link to their website rather than the presentation, so that it stays fresh for years to come.
Great idea, yeah. Don?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Hi Maggie, how you doing? I'm not saying this because I think you can do anything about it, but particularly, but I do find that many people are involved in kind of silos where they're not sure what's going on outside of their own area. Affordable housing providers, I mean, we're going to be talking later on tonight, but there is absolutely none, no providers I know of that are rolling in money. Depending on what AMI you're talking about, 60, 80, 100%, there is a set criteria that the STIG allows you to charge, and within that confine, there has to be a set aside for capital improvements for the property to keep them updated, and MHP actually requires those things, especially for properties they have loans out to. The problem is that there's also a component of that, when you're raising your rents, that is associated with energy consumption. So if energy goes way up, your ability to actually keep with that for multi-units that you're renting goes down. You're actually collecting less because there's, the total can't exceed whatever the state is required. I think you need to know that, because nowhere in here does it look like a community development partnership, or Pine Oaks, or Hesch, or any one of a number of providers. They're really not putting aside enough cash to be able to sustain flat-out paying for some of these conversions without some assistance. As I said, I'm not looking for an answer, I just wanted you to know that the problem is that it's the combined total of your utilities cost and rent each month that dictates what you, the provider can actually charge for the rent part of it.
That I understood.
Okay.
Did you want to come?
You have to just come up to the podium and state your name for the record, thank you.
Good evening, Brianna Kane. If it's a retrofit, and it is deed restricted or income qualified property, it's 60% or under, or if it's an 80%, and we are able to confirm that it's either 80%, which would be moderate income for this program, or 61%, and if it was retrofit opportunities, we can cover those at no cost to the housing. We work directly with POWA, we work with the CDP, we work with Housing Assistance Corporation. On new construction, unfortunately, we had a pilot program that we implemented in this three-year plan that was evaluated independently, third-party evaluation, and it did not return favorable results, seeing that new development has to be built to code, so essentially with some of the feedback that was received, the funds that we were providing that were really rich and robust for the enhanced new construction offering, it has to cease to exist in this next term. But anything with a retrofit opportunity, we can pretty much cover, so that kind of hopefully sets aside that they don't have to take from their, their budgets to make improvements to already existing properties.
And that's directly to the providers, right? Because of multi-units, it's not the individual occupants that are involved in any of this.
Correct. So we work closely all the time, so if, you know, if you have a 40-unit complex, and you know, it's electric oil or propane, and we can come in, we can do energy assessments, we can make improvements to, we do refrigerators, if it's income-eligible, water and dryer, if there's in unit. We have a commercial program offering for multifamily as well, so all of that is available to, to those properties.
For retrofits.
Yes.
Thank you.
Jeff?
I have nothing to add, just like to say thank you both for being here, and great, great proposal, this was great, thank you.
Michael?
Great presentation, thank you.
That's what I meant to say, presentation, I said proposal.
Thank you very much.
What he said.
Have a good evening, thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up?
Madam Chair, members of the board, next up, we're going to hear from Michael Locke from the Harwich Conservation Trust, and Andrew Gottlieb from the Association to Preserve Cape Cod on the next eco-restoration project impacting upon Herring River.
Take it away, my friend.
Thank you, Mr., Mr. Towne Minister. I'm Michael Locke, Executive Director of the nonprofit Harwich Conservation Trust, and we're here this evening with our newest project partners, the Association to Preserve Cape Cod, represented by Executive Director Andrew Gottlieb, Restoration Program Manager April Vopes, and Restoration Ecologist Michael Palmer. We also have Tom Evans, President of the Harwich Conservation Trust Board of Trustees. So a little background of how we got to this point, we're called about three years ago, Harwich Conservation Trust was approached by Fred and Barbara Jenkins, the owner of approximately 31 acres of bog that sits at the corner of Headwaters Drive and Pleasant Lake Ave, opposite the entrance to the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School. The Jenkins, like other bog owners, have been feeling pressure in the industry, not being able to turn a profit because of oversupply from other areas in the country, like the Midwest, also in Canada, and instead of developing the property, they saw fit to work with us for a conservation alternative and keep the property open to the public. Otherwise, there could be a subdivision along Headwaters Drive, which is not only visible for everybody driving down Headwaters Drive and the neighborhoods beyond, but also along Pleasant Lake Ave, and everybody using the Cape Cod Rail Trail. There also could have been a lot developed directly opposite the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School entrance. And like I said, now the trails will be permanently open to the public, we'll have to close them shortly, because we'll be moving into the construction phase of the eco-restoration project. APCC submitted a grant application a little under a year ago to the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration. Incredibly, they were approved for a $15 million grant Cape-wide to support multiple eco-restation projects, one of which is our Hinckley's Pond, Herring River Headwaters Eco-Restoration Project. 1.6 million of that $15 million grant is allocated for the eco-restation construction phase right here in Harwich. So welcome APCC, and we're glad to partner with you.
Good evening, Andrew Gottlieb, Executive Director APCC. You actually, you'll be fortunate, you're here at least from me tonight. We're just happy to come here, you know, as Mike said, you know, we've applied for and received this $15 million grant, we're actually recommended for funding for another NOAA project, pot of money that we expect to come through before the end of the calendar year, for another, just under $3 million. So all told, 18 million for six restoration projects, Falmouth, Mashpee, Dennis, and Harwich, right? And so we're really happy to be able to play the role of sort of a convener, working with great partners like Mike and, and all the towns that are participating, to do, bring federal money in to do projects like this that are really an opportunity for investment in the environment, restoration of habitat, water quality, improve public access, enhancement of people's recreational opportunities, preservation of the way of life that's, that brings people to the Cape. And that's really what our involvement is, is intended to achieve. We're fortunate that we've got great people like April and Mike, who not only have the ability to crack the code for grant writing, but also have the ability to work with towns and partners to help manage and implement these projects. So we'll be working alongside of all of our partners on these projects to facilitate the flow of money, to make sure that the project moves smoothly. We realize that a lot, especially with towns, oftentimes lack the expertise to be able to both pursue and implement these projects, and managing, you know, a federal grant of this size comes with a lot of administrative requirements, burdens, and headaches. And fortunately, we have professionals like, in the field, like April and Mike, who, who make that easy for our partners. And so we're just going around talking to the towns that are, we're going to be doing work in and with as part of this project to make sure that people understand what's happening, the benefits associated with them, and have an opportunity to, you know, strengthen and build public awareness and partnerships with the executive bodies of all the towns, because we're looking at this, not as a beginning, we've been doing this work in a number of different towns, this is at a scale that's a significant uptick for us, and it's a level of activity and funding and restoration work that we very much intend to be able to continue in the future. So we're looking forward to this being a big success, and then we're going to look for more money to bring into Harwich and other communities and do more of this kind of work. So the detail is April, I'm going to turn it over to her with your permission.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike, and thanks, Andrew. So I'm just going to walk through a little bit more of a...
Can you just say your name for the...
Sorry, I'm April Vopes, I'm the Restoration Program Manager with Association to Preserve Cape Cod.
Thank you.
So I'm going to walk through a little bit more about this NOAA Transformation Habitat Restoration Grant, which is funding a portion of the Hinckley's Pond Eco-Restoration Project. So just a little bit more about APCC and our ecosystem restoration program. This was formerly called our Restoration Coordination Center, and we established it in 2015. Prior to that, our focus on restoration was primarily centered on monitoring and looking at pre- and post-monitoring of sites. So as we formed this new focus on restoration, we shifted that to do more assistance to towns and community groups, like the Harwich Conservation Trust, with planning, design, all the technical aspects going from start through to implementation. We still support the monitoring piece as well, but really trying to move forward, get the funding, and provide some added capacity to get more projects done. So this large NOAA grant, again, as was indicated, APCC was awarded a total of $15 million for restoration projects over four years. So our agreement is in place with funding starting this month, and it'll go through September of 2028. And this includes a combination of tidal or salt marsh restoration, as well as more freshwater river and retired cranberry bog restoration projects. So we've got partners across the Cape and three different towns, different nonprofits, including the Harwich Conservation Trust, will be working in Mashpee, particularly with the Wampanoag Tribe and Wacoit Bay National Estuarian Research Reserve. And several of these projects, and the way we've been looking at them is on a watershed scale, not only what can we do to restore habitat, but also what we can do for improvements of fish passage, and those fish passage components are key to our partnerships with the USDA Natural Resource Conservation Service and Cape Cod Conservation District through an NRCS-funded program called the Cape Cod Water Resource Restoration Project that can fund specifically fish passage improvements. So in terms of how that funding broke out, about $5.5 million is for salt marsh restoration, just over $8 million for these freshwater river and bog restoration projects, a portion of the funding, of course, for our staff, time, and expense, and some of our key partners at the Mashpee-Wampanoag Tribe and at Webner, as well as a significant amount of leveraged funds, existing funding that groups like the Harwich Conservation Trust already secured to get to this stage of near-construction, as well as some other funding moving forward for things like monitoring and other aspects of the project. So overall, $20 million going to these five projects in the past and over the next four years. So these are what projects are included there. For salt marsh tidal restoration, Weir Creek and Dennis, and Oyster Pond and Falmouth, the Hinckley's Pond, Herring River Headwaters Project here in Harwich, Red Brook, which is at the border between Mashpee and Falmouth, and the upper Quashnet River and Mashpee. So again, we're looking at this as a watershed-scale restoration with these key components, so looking from the headwaters, which is the location of Hinckley's Pond here, just southwest of Long Pond and Seymour Pond, and the two retired cranberry bogs, which Mike was speaking to, kind of towards the southeast and northeast ends, which will be restored. And it's a little still hard to see on the zoom-in map, but at the kind of exits or entrances, depending on which way you're looking, of Seymour and Long Pond are two locations of needs for improvement for fish passage, which the town of Harwich has in place an agreement with NRCS for some of the early design, and that's being moved forward with that NRCS funding and a separate consultant tie-in bond. But we'll be collaborating, coordinating with them on that, and the work that's moving forward at those retired bogs. There's also two fish passage locations further downstream, including one next to the West Reservoir, which again are also been prioritized by NRCS, and may be a source of funding for future work on those sites as well. So overall, we're looking at, across this funding, restoration of about 220 acres of wetland habitat, 181 acres of pond habitat, and 2.2 miles of river or shoreline habitat. For this project in Harwich, it includes 30 acres of retired cranberry bog restoration, 500 feet of shoreline along Hinckley's Pond, and 174-acre freshwater pond benefits from improvements to water quality, which is an important tie-in to the herring run and habitat for those fish species. We've got key partners across the board on this, so again, we're supporting towns and local partners on this, so there's existing partners and teams on all of these projects. So, you know, Mike will still be leading this project with support from Kelly Grant from the Compact of Cape Cod Conservation Districts, and so, you know, there's a lot of partners involved, we're here to help support that and support the funding and administration of this grant. So we submitted the application, as well as revisions, to NOAA, we'll be managing the grant and providing support to the project teams. As I indicated before, we also often help with the monitoring. And region-wide, we're looking at additional training and capacity building for restoration projects, so we'll be working particularly with Webner and Mashpee-Wampanoag Tribe, not only in projects in Mashpee, but regionally, to show how we can transfer lessons learned from completed restoration projects, like the one at Coldbrook, the soon-to-becoming one at Hinckley's Pond, and future, you know, river and bog restoration projects coming in Mashpee, for example, the Red Brook, Quashnet, Mashpee River projects. So the money, as Mike indicated, within our NOAA grant, there's $1.6 million, which will be subawarded to the Harwich Conservation Trust, the biggest piece of this, to support some of that construction, as well as some additional funding for signage, that'll go up during and after construction, and kind of linking into this region-wide training and capacity building for projects like this. So this is the detail of what that looks like in terms of breakdown, in terms of the NOAA funding, will support some of the engineering consulting fees for construction bidding and oversight, again, $1.3 million going for construction. There'll be some additional outreach, so we're planning on likely doing a community engagement meeting early next year, as construction's just getting underway, as well as probably in spring of 2026, after we've completed construction and have some initial first year monitoring to report back to the community. As I noted, there's a lot of leveraged funds in there that the Harwich Conservation Trust, the Brown family, and through other grants have been provided to support this effort. Oh, and I looked, my schedule somehow didn't appear in there, but right now, we're finalizing with the project team, Interflue, the engineering consultant that Harwich Conservation Trust is working with, is ready to put this project out for construction bid, so we're anticipating contracting by end of this year, and hopefully start of construction in January for ideally about a five to six-month construction period. So we're looking for summer of next year to have that largely completed and to be doing some of that post-restation monitoring. So, you know, all due credit to Mike and Harwich Conservation Trust and the partners on this project for getting it to this point, and we're just really excited to help support it with this additional funding. So we've hosted a number of meetings already, doing a lot of grant admin setup, but wanted to share kind of this with the select board and the town as we move forward on this project.
Wonderful. Super impressive in terms of the funding you've received, it's incredible. And when do you expect the other $3 million?
So we're actually right now doing revisions, we've resubmitted based on input from NOAA funding for that $3.5 million for a Mashpee River project work, so we're anticipating they'll finalize that review and we'll have an agreement in place in January for that project as well.
Wonderful. Board members, any questions? Michael?
No questions, just thank you to APCC for this, this is a great opportunity, we appreciate your support, and then Harwich Conservation Trust for bringing these properties and these great environmental projects over and over and over again, so thank you for your partnership in this town.
Jeff?
I'll say go the same thing, I love grants.
I love grants. And Mike, you certainly deliver, time and time and time again. You actually must be sick and tired of hearing people say, "Oh, Mike Locke is so great," and accolades to Mike. You really deliver, and the town's very lucky to have you. So do you, Don. You deliver as well back there in the third row. Thank you, Mike, for everything.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Also deeply grateful. Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Michael. We've had a long enduring partnership with the Conservation Trust, and you folks just do wonderful work. Andrew's work speaks for itself. The only thing I'd like to do is use the bully pulpit tonight, because people, I'm sure that you'll understand this, on Facebook and other places start ranting off about, "You're destroying the place. You're making it a mess." It's like a regular construction project for a building. Until it's done, you're not going to visualize what it looks like to live in it. So, when you guys do the restoration project, people need to expect that things are going to get torn up, because we're trying to actually make something unwind that it's taken years to get to where it is. So, I beg of everybody, when they're looking at this, look at it as progress that's yet to actually be completed, but it's still progress.
Thank you, Don. Pete?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Just briefly, so, and again, thank you to APCC and the folks who presented this evening. I believe you mentioned, and I forget which one of you it was, that this is, you know, kind of a significant score on the sense of monies, the $18 million. So, it's kind of an uptick in what you've done, even though you've done these projects historically. And now that I have a good understanding or better understanding of your role in these, with all that said, do you have the capacity to manage all these, you know, and make them all come to fruition without too many headaches or stressful nights for Mike?
Yeah. We've been building our capacity, I would say, since I started back in 2015. It was me as one staff, and two, we now have four full-time staff on our restoration project team, and we're part of the piece. Again, Mike, Kelly, and others are members of that, as well as the, you know, consulting firms, engineering firms. So, you know, we have divided up amongst our staff. That, we also have our education outreach staff, two staff now who support some of the community engagement piece, working with Webner, as well as the partners. And then, our chief operating officer, new staff for us as of about a year, year and a half ago, is also helping to support the grant administration with our existing grant administrator. So, we have a team of about eight to nine staff, depending how you count, at our organization, that are supporting this, along with each of the project teams.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, I was pretty amazed that you said four-month period in terms of construction, but overall, it'll be like 2026 before it's complete.
No, the current estimate from Interflue Engineering Firm, and again, it depends, we don't have the construction bids, we don't have a construction schedule from the accepted bidder. The estimate is kind of a five-to-six-month construction period.
Oh, five to six.
But again, it could be shorter or faster, depending on kind of the final bids that we get in and the construction schedules that's proposed. So, yeah, that's the current estimate.
Okay. Well, thank you. It was a wonderful presentation.
If I may, just out of curiosity, you built a house, you expect a 20% to 25%, maybe a 30% overage. What about on projects like this? Do they run over?
So, I've worked on other projects. So, APCC supported the Falmouth Ron and Gun Club, for example, with restoration of the Child's River, which was another river and bog restoration project. So, typically, we're building in, much like other projects, contingency. So, we have built into this some contingency budget. What I've found more often is changes, sometimes due to change orders for selected desires from the project team. So, on our past projects, we didn't really run into issues where we had overages that weren't, you know, a result of construction. There were more opportunities for us to improve the outcome. So, for example, there was opportunity with funding to remove additional sand from the top of the bog surface to allow for more natural wetland hydrology and wetland plants to come in. So, there is a built-in contingency with these budgets and within these grants, but I think there's also kind of that opportunity to see where the bids come in, and if they are under bid, which we have seen a couple of projects recently recently come under, you know, there's still the opportunity to kind of adjust the planning a little bit as we move forward.
That's great. Thank you. Mike, you just keep an eye on her, okay? No problem. Thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you to all of you. And again, the partnerships are so important, the regional approach is so important, but especially when it comes to funding. I mean, there's more power in it. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
Madam Chair, members of the board, next up is Anastasia Radenko. You may recall Anastasia when we had just about everybody from GHD here, talking about all the projects we have. But Anastasia, as you may recall, represents the town of Harwich, in addition to me, to the Pleasant Bay Alliance. So, Anastasia's going to present to you tonight updates regarding the Pleasant Bay Alliance and the watershed permit that goes with that. And as she presents, there is going to be an item to come back for you, the board, to vote on next week regarding this discussion. So, tonight is more to give you the update and information, so you can make an informed decision next week based on GHD and staff recommendations.
Okay, great.
With that, Madam Chair?
Welcome, Anastasia.
Thank you. So, I wanted to start today with a brief overview of the Pleasant Bay watershed permit, and then talk through the proposed changes that are being proposed as part of the five-year watershed update, permit update, which is the memo that was given to the select board. So, Pleasant Bay is a watershed that covers a little over 21,000 acres across four towns, Orleans, Chatham, Harwich, and Brewster. Each of these towns is going through their own planning effort, and those four planning efforts were combined in a targeted watershed management plan. So, that combines the four plans to come up with one plan that will meet the nitrogen reduction goals in Pleasant Bay. That targeted watershed management plan was formalized through an intermunicipal agreement and set in motion the first watershed permit in Massachusetts, which was finalized in 2018 for Pleasant Bay. So, that permit outlines the steps that each town is committed to taking to meet its nitrogen removal goals by the permit. And it relies on an adaptive management plan. So, the adaptive management plan tracks progress. It updates the models that the plans are based on, and it looks at different assumptions like growth, and it allows for adjustment of the plan as it's being implemented over a 20-year period. And there's key milestones every five years to relook at those adjustments and to adjust the nitrogen removal goals if required. So, this is that first major evaluation, looking at, are there adjustments that should be made to the permit? So, this is very little, but this shows, I apologize for that. This shows the original permit in 2018, 2018, the TWMP implementation schedule. So, there's four phases in the permit. The first row are the nitrogen mitigation strategies that were completed prior to the permit. So, in Harwich, the Muddy Creek Inlet Widening Project. So, this is a project, Muddy Creek was artificially restricted by an undersized cover that was replaced, and it restored the natural flushing to that waterway. That's nitrogen mitigation strategy. It's listed prior to the permit. And then, you'll see in the first phase, the two projects were the installation of Phase II sewers, which the town has successfully completed, and the enactment of a fertilizer bylaw. And then, you'll see, or maybe you won't see, but the next line is where we are now. We're relooking at some of the assumptions that were used to build the permit and then recommending changes to the permit going forward. So, the goal of the five-year update, and this is from the permit, is to update the watershed permit based on ongoing science-based findings. And there's two major changes that are being proposed as part of the permit. So, the first, the original permit was based on current loads at the time of the Massachusetts Estuaries Project that's based on data from 2003. So, each town has worked to update those load estimates, first bringing them up to 2024, to today, and then looking throughout the planning period. So, each town established a planning period. For Harwich, the planning period that was selected was 20 years. It's a 20-year permit, so let's look at anticipated growth over the next 20 years and incorporate into the planning how to manage that growth to successfully remove enough nitrogen to meet the nitrogen management goals. The second was to incorporate the findings of the updated hydrodynamic model. So, this is the same model that was used to develop the TMDL, run by the Massachusetts Estuaries Project, but it was updated with a number of assumptions. The major one was looking at the impact of the Muddy Creek widening project. So, we widened inlet, we changed the dynamics of that waterway. How does that affect the model findings? So, that's the first. And the major thing that that affects is attenuation. So, attenuation, as you have septic nitrogen, it goes into groundwater. As that groundwater travels through freshwater, there's a certain amount of that nitrogen that's taken up in the freshwater system. That's called attenuation. So, that's natural uptake of nitrogen. When the inlet was widened, it was restored from a freshwater system to a saltwater system, so you get better flushing, but you get less attenuation, right? So, you have two different dynamics, and one of the goals of the model was to see how those two different dynamics interact with each other. And the second was disaggregation. So, aggregation, you put four different watersheds together, apply the same model assumptions to them. In the refinement of the model, that was broken apart, and that allows you to look at the attenuation of each separate sub watershed, and we'll talk about the impacts of that in the next slide. I just wanted to stop and see if anyone had any questions on those two changes in the model.
Another question, Madam Chair, but an apology. I apologize, I did not recognize that you have the opportunity, based on the agenda language, to take the vote tonight. So, as Anastasia goes through the slides, she will reach a point where we would recommend that if the board's ready tonight to take action. So, as you get through the slides, you'll see that coming up.
Okay. And do board, do any board members have questions now before Anastasia continues?
No.
No? Okay. Go ahead, Anastasia.
Wonderful. So, this is the table that's outlined in the memo, and it outlines Harwich's growth assumptions. So, you see the first line is the attenuated nitrogen that's going into the bay, Harwich's portion, which is a little over 10,000 kilograms per year. The second line is the adjustment for disaggregation. So, we took that one watershed broken into four, and that means that there's two types of attenuation for Pleasant Bay vein. There's a 29% attenuation credit, so in that freshwater system, nitrogen that's being broken down, and in Little Pleasant Bay, 4%. So, that's a net deduction what Harwich is discharging into the bay. So, that's the minus 462. I can't even read that, sorry. And then, the third line is the growth from 2003 to present. So, that was actually looking at water use data and development in the town between those two time periods, and then looking at growth. So, looking at 20-year growth projection for that, we looked at how many undeveloped lots that were in Pleasant Bay, and then came up with a growth projection based on historic water use data. So, how much has water gone up, projecting that over the 20-year period, and that's how we get our 20-year growth projections. And so, for each of the communities, each community updated their growth projections, and then that was compiled into this memo. So, what does that mean? That means that the proposed nitrogen removal goal increases from a little over 4,399 kilograms per year to 7,634 kilograms per year. The two major changes being the disaggregation and then the growth, right? You have more growth in the permit, so you're going to have a larger nitrogen load that you're trying to manage. So, this is the updated table, looking at all of those different changes. And so, you'll see it has a nitrogen removal credit for completion of the Phase II sewers, which have been completed, and Phase III sewers, which are underway, which is a little over 7,000 kilograms per year. So, even with these changes, Harwich is anticipated to meet its revised nitrogen removal goal of 7,634 kilograms per year. So, even though the numbers have changed significantly, the town is still on track to meet its nitrogen removal goals with the current plan. And so, I wanted to pause there and see if there were any questions, any discussion, and to see if the select board was ready to make a vote on whether to accept these proposed revisions. So, the next step would be for these revisions to either be accepted or to have changes made to them, and we're working towards having the update report submitted to DEP by the end of December. So, the Pleasant Bay Alliance, which oversees the permit, is looking for comments as soon as practical, so that the evaluations can be changed if needed in order to meet that deadline.
Okay. So, any comments from within? Otherwise, based on the numbers that you just provided, and the 7,634, which would be still our goal, and would we be looking at these numbers once you submit to DEP? And if DEP likes these numbers, are these numbers steadfast till another five-year review?
Yes. Yes, so these would be incorporated in the permit, and then we would go through a similar process in five years, again, looking at assumptions. So, for instance, growth, if not as much growth as seen as was originally anticipated, there is the opportunity to lower that number or the other way around.
The other way?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Other board members, questions?
If I could, yeah, if I could, just trying to understand, which I struggle with. When you talk about the future growth being calculated, is that future growth just within that watershed area?
Yes.
Or is it just within that area?
So, a similar methodology is being implemented for the other watersheds in Harwich, which will be part of an upcoming presentation when we present the CWMP updates. But for the purposes of this permit, we're focusing just on Pleasant Bay.
Thank you.
Don, did you have any?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one piece of historical information, because our sewer-ing was largely driven in East Harwich, not by the executive summary for the engineer, but by the Pleasant Bay Alliance analysis. And it did include a rather robust build-out, which I am not certain that anybody here would have bought in to, because I think it was close to 20%.
Yes. I know what you're for, the East Harwich Center, right?
Yeah. And I just want to make sure that everybody understands that that's where this is, because if anyone's looking for sewer-ing to rein in potential large-scale development, there's a component in this that's, setting aside an assumption, increases the development by 20% there.
And one thing that I want to clarify is, these 20-year growth projections do not include that assumption. So, that's looking at historical data going forward 20 years, not the separate allocation that was set aside for East Harwich.
And how would we go about reining that in, in actuality?
You would have to change your flow-neutral bylaw, which allows for development up to what was outlined in the CWMP. That can be changed through regulatory change, and that allocation could be taken out or be allocated to other watersheds.
I only say this because there's other work that needs to be done here.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you, Don.
Nothing. Thank you.
I have no other questions, and so, could we?
So, yeah, the question before you then is, if you accept the presentation and the data contained therein, if you accept that, that allows Anastasia and I go back to the Alliance to update our information for the permit information, which then goes to DEP as was set in December of this year. So, I would recommend, based on the information provided and the information you received, I think, back in September, on the original memo.
In September, and then the latest memo was in October.
October.
So, there's been little tweaks that have been made with each memo.
Thank you, yep.
Okay.
I move that we support the presentation.
Second.
Moved in second. Any other discussion?
My only other question is, so in five years, we do this again?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Plenty of you here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five-zero.
Big assumption.
Thank you.
Pete?
I'm just going to take one item out of order under New Business to go to item A.
So, technically, Madam Chair, it's item A and B-
Sorry, B, too.
-that we're going to be talking about generally. You might be able to progress through your consent agenda?
Oh, do you want me to just do it?
If you can progress through it, if it gets bogged down-
Madam Chair, I move to approve the Select Board meeting minutes from October 15, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five-zero. Okay. Now, items A.
Now, Madam Chair, you naturally have before you New Business, and New Business A, you're, as you know, you're joined by Attorney Jeff Blake from KP Law. Attorney Blake and I have been working with regulatory staff and public safety staff to make sure that your license regulations for liquor licenses are as up-to-date and accurate as possible. And so, that's what Attorney Blake is here to present this evening for your consideration.
Great. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Administrator. Thank you for having me, and as the administrator said, my name is Jeff Blake from KP Law. I'm your town council. About five months ago, I was called by the town and spoke with the fire chief about an issue with respect to capacity of establishments. about an issue with respect to capacity of establishments under your liquor license regulations. There appeared to be a conflict between Section 104H on page five, which said, "Licenses shall not permit entrance to the premises by more persons than the maximum occupancy limit established by the building department." And 106F on page seven says, "The actual capacity of the licensed premises will be established by the licensing authority and shall be the lowest set by septic or building capacity. The capacity shall be stated on the license." After reviewing this, I could see where there could be some confusion. And looking through the liquor license statute, section, chapter 138, section 12, 12 says that a local licensing authority can come up with their own regulations. However, you can't dictate a different capacity than the state building code does. So what I've done, and I think you have before you a couple of minor changes. Number one, to page five, as I had said, I put here on number H, "Licenses shall not permit entrance to the premises by more persons than the maximum occupancy established by the building department and the new languages as determined by a registered professional engineer or similarly qualified individual." Typically, it's the engineers under the building code who come in. And there's also a formula that the building inspector would use. So this is, this is what I put in here. It's now consistent with chapter 138.
Did you have a question, Michael?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'm trying to find out where it was.
I have it in print, if you will.
It's okay, I got it. All right, so that's.
Page five.
Going to H.
H.
Page five. So I guess more globally, and I would have started with, let me go back up a little bit. Page 65 of our packet, which is page three of your memo.
Yep.
Let's go to D. "The authority may require additional information from the applicant prior to the public hearing. Lease agreement financing information, maximum capacity calculations by licensed professional."
It should be engineer, I made a typo there.
No, I get that, so as long as you're going to change that, I'm fine with it. Is there any consistency in this? And I have found over the years, in different engineering, one may say one thing, the other may say another. And there seems to be, you know, we've got two cases that were brought before us this summer. And in each case, each one of those two had hired somebody different. And I would, and I would, and they came up, they have different numbers, but based on different criteria. And then I did read in here, based on, you had mentioned, based on Title V.
There, yes, there is, I noted on page seven that there could be a difference. And I was going to get there. But to answer your question, typically, there's a formula that is used. And it's ultimately up to the building official to accept what the capacity is. It's not, I don't think that there's a lot of discretion involved in these things. Typically, the engineer does it, the building official looks it over and agrees with the calculation based on use codes and square footage of area.
Thank you for that. And I guess that is part of my point. So ultimately, they're going to submit something. But our building commissioner, I believe is the way we refer to it, is going to look at that and make a determination based on, or based on how they can.
That is correct. It's going to ultimately be him or her that's going to be able to find out what the ultimate capacity of that building is, under the building code.
Okay. And they'll review the engineer report and either say, no, this isn't going to work for me, or yes, it will?
That is correct.
Thank you.
That is correct. So.
Can I, oh, go ahead, Joe.
Well, if I could just add to that, a portion of that is already the process. As you know, when applications come in for liquor licenses, administration staff circulated to all relevant staff. So there's already some oversight. What these three items do, however, is streamlined it so that all parties understand there's one number that we're working from on the license. So by enhancing these regulations, you're solidifying the process that we already do for staff review, in my opinion.
And we're also, we're also getting rid of some of the ambiguity. Because if you look at page seven, 106F, it said, as I said before, "The actual capacity of licensed premises will be established by the licensing authority and shall be the lowest set by septic or building capacity." So what we're doing now is saying, it's building capacity, that's what, that's consistent with the statute, and that's what we're going. But I've also put in here, I've revised it to say, "The actual capacity of licensed premises, as determined by the building department pursuant to Section 104H of these regulations, shall be stated on the license." So we're going with the, with the, with the building commissioner, as we have, that's consistent with the statute. But I also put in here, "Note that the maximum capacity of the licensed premises may be different than the capacity of the licensed premises for purposes of Title V." And this is where we had an issue. Because you're town septic, you don't have sewer, while a, the load, the capacity under the building code is for safety, for safety purposes. Your Title V may depend on the size of the system. So there very well may be a situation where your capacity under the building code is 100, and your Title V is 50. So to be consistent with the statute, we're putting on the license the number from the building code. But I also want every, every establishment to understand that there are really two different capacities at work here. And while this isn't something that you, the licensing authority, with respect to septic, it's not really your jurisdiction, please be aware that the Board, it is the Board of Health's jurisdiction. And if they understand that you're having capacity, that you're constantly filling the restaurant or the establishment with more than your required and your allowed amount on your Title V approval, there could be a separate action against them.
Julie, if I may?
Yep, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. So if we get a capacity, and we approve a capacity based on a professional engineer or like-qualified person, building commissioner is fine, and it's for 300 people.
Yep.
But they only have one toilet in the restaurant in a small septic system, the Board of Health still has a say?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Board of Health still has their jurisdiction over it. And they can come in and they can, they can do a cease and desist and tell them to cease and desist over their, whatever their capacity be, under your, let's say it's a capacity of seven.
Yeah, go ahead.
Or 10. So yes, they could, they still have jurisdiction.
Thank you. Follow-up from H on page five. "License shall not permit entrance..." "...as determined by a registered professional..." You're going to change profession to professional? That's just another Scrivener's error?
It's another Scrivener's error.
"...by registered professional engineer or similarly qualified individual." So I guess I'd go back up to where it says, "Limit established by building department." I believe that that should say commissioner.
Is that where you, I mean, that was what was in the reg itself, but I can put commissioner in.
And only if the board and the town administrator agrees. But we don't have, we don't want somebody in our building department making this decision. We want our building commissioner to make this decision. So I would change that to commissioner. That's all I have on that page.
Can I jump in on your, those pages? Because one question I have is, there's a reference to standees. And I just want to make sure that when we're talking about capturing these calculations, that we're incorporating, you know, apples to apples. And we talk about on page six, oh, it really starts on page five, under I, number one. "Persons who wait inside the premises shall be kept in an orderly line and must not be permitted to block fire aisles or exits. The number of such persons waiting inside the premises shall not exceed the number of persons allowed as standees." So in terms of those calculations, when we're going to rely on a professional engineer, are they looking at just the overall capacity of the building and including seating and standing?
That's my understanding of how the, how the engineers and the building commissioner calculate. It's, how many people can be in that building?
And it's sitting or standing?
That's, that is right.
Sitting or standing, okay, yeah.
Just real quick, the calculation for the building code, and I don't remember the two numbers, there's a square footage per chair, and there's a square footage per person.
Okay.
So they'll look at the entire building, and they'll do the square footage per chair based on the number of chairs or seats, which would be driven by Board of Health for the number of seats they can have. And then the number of standees based on the space around the bar, or whatever the case may be. So this allows the full use of capacity, and it streamlines what we're going to do when there's a complaint on Saturday night.
Is to look around at all the heads.
And to count heads, like we've done, but we're using the actual occupancy number of the building.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Don?
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm trying to get my head wrapped around one problem here. Is currently, if there's an overcrowding situation as determined by the Board of Health number, that's coupled with the possibility of it being an infraction for the pouring license. It feels like you're decoupling that entirely. And as a practical matter, how's the Board of Health going to enforce this period?
I am, I am decoupling that. The statute does say that the capacity has to be that as determined by, in, I think, the language is building department. How does the Board of Health enforce it? They go out, they get reports, they go out and they count heads. It's very similar to what the fire department did. In fact, if there's a complaint, and the fire department gets a complaint, and they go out and they count 300 heads, there's nothing that prevents them to come back and saying, hey, Board of Health, there were 300 people in here last night, and what's your capacity? And the Board of Health's capacity is 150, then, then there's issues.
Look, you just sat through the GHD presentation about seuring and denitrifying. My concern here is that the reason that they were coupled originally is it doesn't, the septic system doesn't care whether you were standing or sitting. The consumption of alcohol would presumably encourage the use of the facilities. Or overuse, if they're overloaded in the capacity of the building. I just don't see as a practical matter that that does anything other than results in a report that says, you were bad, the Board of Health is unhappy with you, don't do that again. And I don't see that that's a really heavy enforcement mechanism.
Well, well, having worked with many, many boards of health, you're right. Probably the first time, the Board of Health says, you were bad, don't do it again. But the Board of Health probably has more enforcement authority in matters of public health than any board in, in, in any town or city in the Commonwealth. So you're right that maybe the beginning that is. But they can ultimately issue their cease and desist, they can shut the restaurant down. They can have a cease and desist, we can go in and we can enforce it with a preliminary injunction. Very similar to what you guys do when you do a liquor license suspension. They have a Title V permit that they're given, and they can suspend that permit. They can, they can drag them in, they can have the hearings, they have the same. Now, I understand that it's, it's two different boards. But I'm, I'm bringing this in more in, I'm doing two things with this. I'm making this more consistent and taking away some of the ambiguities for the establishments themselves and bring it in, into compliance more, more in line with the statute. It says, we basically, the, the capacity is what the building, building code says.
I just feel in a small town, the ability to have an enforcement mechanism going through the Board of Health is probably fairly unlikely. We could ask the fire department on our behalf to go in and check on things. But I can't believe that we're going to wind up in a situation where they hear something because a friend went out to the restaurant. And the normal way that the eyes and ears have been dealing with this, the point of contact is because both of those things were on the license. Once the Board of Health's number is out of the license, I don't see how they get, as a practical matter, I don't see how they enforce this.
Well, I mean, typically, the way these things come about is a complaint. Go ahead.
I want to emphasize that this is a matter that the regulatory staff, including Health Department on behalf of the Board of Health, Public Safety, Building and Planning, we've had numerous study group discussions, if you will, over the last six months, after talking about it for over a year and a half. So what's being presented to you tonight has been evaluated and worked on by all of the regulatory agents, including Health Department agents.
The board, or is it the department?
It would be the department. I.
That's what I'm concerned about, is there's a decoupling here. Is the Board of Health would have the jurisdiction, not the Health Director.
Joe?
Well, the.
If I could just finish.
Okay.
Please, thank you. The Health Director is a direct reporter of the town administrator, not the Board of Health. And so the reason why we had this group assembled is that, as Attorney Blake has described, if any of the regulatory agents and the public safety agents become aware of something, they talk as a group. And so administration becomes aware of this on behalf of the Select Board. Administration becomes aware of it on behalf of the Board of Health or the Health Director. What we're really striving for here, and we want you to endorse, is all of those regulatory bodies, and I'd look to the chiefs to correct me if I'm wrong, all of the regulatory bodies and public safety agents, everybody's desiring a number on the liquor license. And that's also evidenced by what you'll see as item number B. Because if you adopt these regulations and we're able to promulgate them going forward, the next step is to say to all the licensees, if you don't know what your number is, and some of these are so old, we don't know what the number is, you need to get a number, and here's the mechanism by which to do it. So I, I know it's not necessarily perfect, but it was born out of regulatory agents being frustrated by every department that deals with this. I can't recognize you, but in a second. And so that's, that's what brings us to you tonight, after a year and a half of discussion and six months of intense work by the regulatory and public safety folks.
And to David Blank, Fire Chief, just, I had a lot of conversations with the Health Director about this. And their number, and this goes back to Kathy Tenalia, goes back to her first, the Health number only counts seats. So the minute all the seats are full in the restaurant, if there's a staff in there, if there's somebody standing at the bar, there's anything else, by Health Code, they, by using that number, they're overcrowded. But Health Code recognizes that there's a certain amount of quote-unquote transient traffic plus employees, and I'm not the health expert, but this is what I got out of the conversation, that they account for in the flow per day based on seats, based on whether it's takeout or sit-down service. So we went through all of this at length, and we all agreed. And it's very similar to what everybody else around us is doing. Occupancy is the total number as determined by the building department. And that's what gets enforced by public safety when we go out. The Health Department has their own jurisdiction and handles it in a different manner altogether. And typically doesn't do, according to Kerry, does not do spot inspections in the middle of the night because there's, you know, there's 30 seats instead of 20. They catch them when they do their pre-inspections or mid-inspections, that's when they determine seating. So just, just as a little background to where we got.
And just to finish this whole thought, this process that Attorney Blake is presenting to you tonight and these regulations were a result of numerous conversations for your regulatory staff. And for me, I'm urging you to let, let the attorney, as he finishes his presentation, but to adopt the regulations as presented, because what we're finding is there's greater injury to all parties, if you will, if we allow the ambiguities to remain. Because what these regulation changes would allow is for these administrative groups to continue to work. And as we refine this, if there's need for revision, we'll do it through the group, through the attorney, then to you folks.
Yeah. And I just want to go off of both comments made by Michael and Don and Chief Blank, is that I suppose if there's an issue with the septic, you know, if there's too many people and there's a septic capacity issue, then Health is going to know that. Whether or not you guys report back to them, they're going to know it if somebody's in to do a septic repair or pump or whatever, right? So it's, they're going to know if there are issues in any particular establishment.
That's usual.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Just one more thing, Madam Chair. I'm a little disturbed that it didn't go to the Board of Health, because the Health Director may be able to identify something. But you're saying that the compliance is by vote of the Board of Health, correct?
Well, I think that the Health Director.
Who is it who actually is, determines if there's a violation? The Health Director, so that it can be enforced in fines or closures, or is it the Board of Health?
So typically, the way this goes is your Health Agent, Health Director, issues a cease and desist order. There's the ability to appeal that to a full Board of Health. The full Board of Health comes in, holds a hearing, and makes a determination as to whether or not to uphold your Board, your Health Agent, Health Director's order. So ultimately, it would go to a Board of Health, and then off to the, to the court under a cert appeal.
And not to lose the point I was trying to make. And not to lose the point I was trying to make, regardless of whether I think this is the neatest thing since sliced bread, I really would have liked to have seen the Board of Health, if they're involved in any other actions, to understand what's going on before we voted and handed it to them.
Also, as I said, this brings us into line with the statute, which does say, you know, your license can't vary the occupancy beyond what the calculation is for the building code.
Thank you. Oh, Pete, sorry.
I got a couple of questions, but so just on that point, Attorney Blake, then what authority does the Board of Health or the Health Director have based on Title V?
That's right. You just answered your own question, Title V.
Well, but my point is, if you said the occupancy is based on the building code.
For purposes of the liquor license.
Right.
For purposes of your liquor license, right? You, as a liquor licensing authority, the local licensing authority, can, you could put conditions on a license, but one of them is that you can't vary it, vary the occupancy beyond what, you can't vary it from what the calculation is under the building code. The Board of Health has, is not the local licensing authority for purposes of 138. The Board of Health is the Title V licensing authority and they have, under Title V, a whole different formula as to how much that septic system can handle and how many people can be in there. I understand that it's somewhat confusing and I'm not going to argue that it's not, that you get yourself in a position where you get a whole bunch of cooks in the pot and wouldn't it be a lot easier to just have you guys or the Board of Health be the one that figured it, figures it out? I'm just saying that I'm bringing your regulations into compliance with and in line with the statute and that there are going to be situations where the building code is going to provide for a higher occupancy than Title V, but that doesn't mean that the Board of Health is going to be stripped of their authority to enforce Title V.
And if I can continue, I understand that. To me, I look at this as creating more confusion and maybe it's my simplistic view of this. Clearly, I'm not the ones dealing with it at 2:00 in the morning or midnight, but I consider this creating greater confusion than less. Perhaps the numbers on the licenses, on the current licenses that are out there are not accurate, however, the documents that I've seen have numbers on them.
They do.
So in which case, that's the number we enforce until this is changed or if this is changed. Until that moment in time, that's the number we enforce.
And the issue is, in some respects, it's higher than the Board of Health number and in some respects, it's lower than the building code number. So here, what we're trying to do is we're trying to have a definitive, it's the building code number. And I agree with you that there are, it could be a little confusing, that's why I put my note under 106F. And it does put probably no more than is already, it does put some more onus on the Health Department to do their own inspection, but I don't know, and I don't know if we've done a total analysis, but it's my recollection, when it was brought to me, that a lot of these licenses don't jive with what the Title V is and some of them don't jive with what the building code number is.
Joe?
To try to simplify, if you had a new license application come before you, the ABCC regulatory process presently and for about the last six or seven years has one number that you have to answer on the application. You must answer this for the ABCC through the local. What is the occupancy of the building? And so what we're trying to correct here is many of your licensees are so old, we don't have the data. The ABCC doesn't provide the data. So we're trying to get to the one number that's always supposed to have been there. What is occupancy? So we toyed with any number of strategies where we theoretically could have required everybody at the local level to reapply based on their occupancy building number, but it wouldn't jive with regulation. Going forward, you have to answer the one question, it's the only number that the state looks for. What is your occupancy number? And everywhere else, that's the one number that goes on the license. And so what we've seen are licenses that are so old, we don't know what the number is. And in some cases, it's been perpetuated from years past that may not still be accurate. Or more recently, and I'd say recently would be over the last 15 years, there is, well, occupancy is this, but septic is that. None of that matters under 138, none of that matters to the ABCC and we're trying to modernize it. So the one number that you have to deal with, that administrative staff has to deal with to start for a liquor license is that one question. And so this gets us to the answer of what is your occupancy?
And I appreciate that and it does help clarify it, however, to me in the end, Madam Chair, if I could, sorry.
Sure, no, Dan.
In the end, to me, it creates greater confusion for those where the numbers don't align. That's my only point. And I think what it does, in all due respect to our attorney, it increases the possibility of legal expenses because now we're going to be challenging, being challenged by, you know, the licensees.
Well, if I may, part B is for those where we don't have it or if they want to obtain it, there is a cost potentially, and that's the registered plan, that's the registered engineer saying this should be the occupancy. So we're trying to do that engineering cost long before the legal costs.
Right, but I'm talking, again, and I get your point. My point is, they're going to base it on the building piece, not on the septic piece. And so when the number comes back, if they don't jive, I just see greater confusion. I'm going to move on because I got a couple of other questions. I understand your points and I thank you for that. I'm not sure I'm convinced, but when we talk about, going back to page three, maximum capacity calculations, is it acceptable to put in by a licensed Commonwealth or Massachusetts professional engineer or is that?
Sure.
Yeah?
Yeah.
That would be my preference because, you know, the last thing I want is somebody from California or wherever opining on this. Additionally, if I could continue to page five, wordsmithing, as opposed to using as determined, are we able to say as recommended by a registered professional? Because again, ultimately it comes back to the Building Department or Building Commissioner. So it's a recommendation, it's not their determination. Now again, I guess I'm wordsmithing because that's what they're using as their calculation, but to me, I read it as they're determining what the number is, they're making a recommendation to the Building Commissioner.
Sure. I think that the way these things typically go is the Building Commissioner speaks with the engineer and the engineer makes that determination, but I think as recommended is fine.
And I know I'm wordsmithing, but I appreciate it. And lastly, actually, maybe I'm going back there. Yeah, that particular, I'm sorry. Page three, it didn't talk about, it didn't mention or there was no language regarding similarly qualified individual. I actually prefer that language not being in there.
Not?
So I don't know what the rule of the board is, but I would go back on page 5H and include the same language as we did in page three, which was Commonwealth or Mass professional engineer.
You can strike it.
Again, it's up to the Board as a whole, but that would be my thoughts and comments on this, despite my reservations on Title V. Thank you.
I think, well, I'll ask the whole Board, but I mean, anywhere that it says, you know, licensed engineer, I think we should make it clear, right, that's Massachusetts and.
If I could summarize what we're looking for with counsel, ready to interject and/or Public Safety when I'm wrong, the ask of staff and the work of attorney is that you'd be voting to amend 1.02D on page two, and let me just double check it. Sorry, 1.02D on page three, I apologize. The reference, however, would be correcting scrivener's errors and recommending changes by Board, maximum capacity calculations by a Massachusetts licensed professional engineer.
Right.
Then we're asking you to amend 1.04D on page five. Am I doing this right? No, my numbers are off, I apologize.
H.
104H, thank you. 1.04H on page five, that you'd be adding after the word building, the word commissioner in lieu of department, so it would be by the Building Commissioner, as determined by a Massachusetts licensed professional engineer.
Recommended.
Sorry, thank you, recommended. And then 1.07F on page seven. We haven't really talked about it, but perhaps it would be as determined by the Building Commissioner to be consistent.
Yes.
Yeah, right.
And then.
So we're striking similarly qualified individual?
Yes.
Because it doesn't really have a meaning.
On the previous reference, that was incorporating, yep, Pekarski. However, we would also ask that all references from Board of Select would be changed to Select Board and further that we can correct any scrivener's errors that is apparent in the new language. So amend 1.02D, 1.04H, 1.07F, change all references to Select Board and correct any scrivener's errors.
So moved.
Hold on, just for clarity, it was 106F.
Did I get that one wrong too?
It's 106F on page seven. Commissioner.
Thank you, apologies.
Just want to make sure.
So moved.
All right. Any other?
Just on Pete's edits, suggest, well, now part of a motion, is the Commonwealth, are we required, I mean, I guess building code plays into this, can we say Commonwealth? Does that jive? I'm for it.
Yes, I think so.
Okay.
Your regulations can be more stringent.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Michael.
David Blank, Fire Chief, I'm just not sure, and I think it's worth investigating, if it has to be an engineer for anybody that's been involved in building process engineers to like load calculations for structural materials and everything else, it may just be good to say certified licensed professional and not restrict it because we may be forcing something that can't be got. That would be my concern, is we're holding them to, there may not be an engineer that does this calculation and I don't have that information, which is why I was a fan of the similarly qualified person, but if we're going to change that, maybe just take the word engineer out and licensed, certified licensed by the Commonwealth, because it could be an architect, should be able to do the calculations, it should be somebody that's licensed by the state, but not necessarily as an engineer.
Yeah, I'm just, and I'm just going based on, you know, when we have to calculate gross floor area for different projects, it's usually an engineer who does that because he also has a stamp.
And you would know better, so that's fine.
To that point, and for Item B, Plan B, we're looking for someone to attach their professional seal.
Right, the seal.
I would recommend it be a Massachusetts licensed professional engineer.
I agree with that.
Yeah, and architects don't all have stamps, so I think we need to.
We want a stamp.
Yeah.
Or whatever they, yes, yes.
Okay, so we have the motion, a second.
I only have one more comment, it's an ask of you to bring something back, but.
Draft?
No, to both chiefs that are in the room tonight and having been blessed with many hearings over the last 10 years, recognizing what the Town Administrator, we usually task him with and then invite Jeff to, Attorney Blake to attend, the way that we're counting bodies when we go into one of these places, I think that needs to be spelled out because watching these hearings very much like a courtroom, the other side's attorney, some that shall remain nameless, I think will pick that process apart, at least the way it was explained to me. So I would like to have further discussion on how you're going to count when you go in there at another time.
Sorry, Jeff, go ahead, continue. You good?
You guys had a motion in a second?
A motion in a second. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero.
Hope.
Oh, did you say no?
You didn't ask for it against.
I didn't, you're right, I apologize.
Aye. Four, one, zero.
Thank you. Excuse me. One part of this, not that this involves Attorney Blake, but we also, and I just want to put this back on an agenda, we also talked about, and I think I brought this up a week or two ago for future agenda in the next couple of weeks, about getting our group together for assessing the drop off, the safety issues in Howardport. I think it was Richard who asked us to make sure that we put together some type of a task force with teeth. So I think that plays into what we're trying to achieve tonight and that's secondary, so I just want to remind you.
And I think you're also relying upon the traffic safety report that you.
Oh, that's right, so it was December, sorry, yeah. I just want to make sure that we move on that though, once we have that information. Any other comments on this matter?
Well, Madam Chair, if I could, it may generate more, but if you look at Item B.
Right.
So now to try to accomplish this and try to get to the single number, we would ask the Board to establish the directive that requires Chapter 138, Section 12 liquor license holders who wish to increase their occupancy number. We toyed with the idea of saying change, but as you might imagine, most establishments don't want to change to lower their occupancy. So any Section 12 liquor license holder who wishes to increase their occupancy number with the Town of Howard must provide a capacity site plan from a licensed professional. And again, licensed professional was meant to be engineer. And if I may explain, the purpose of this is, you have these regulations, we're in the middle, the process right now of doing the renewals for annuals, which happen next month, so that as we refine, your regulations tell us what the number is. If establishments find that and say, wait a second, we can prove that the number can be higher, this is how they would provide proof. And what's that getting to is, as you know, we have a number of annual licenses that they must apply after October 31st and before November 30th, so they can only apply in November for application or renewal. Not knowing where this would have gone, that is a resource that staff and establishments are meant to rely upon. And so if you do that, we can give guidance now and in November that before the licenses come to you in December, they may want to take that action. Otherwise, in the future, as an establishment may say, we want to change it, we're just emphasizing that we need a stamped plan.
Right. And on that, can I, I just want to follow up on that. Is there going to be a specific application or is there one already in the making?
So there's the renewal application itself, this would be.
We'll just include that part.
Part and parcel of that, so to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since we admittedly have a whole bunch of people out there, I'm not even sure how many, where that number is kind of suspect and we're not sure how it was derived because it's years old, why wouldn't we actually say somewhere here that should the business itself change hands or the license change hands, that it would automatically trigger getting a calculation?
We put on page three, 102D, the authority may require additional information from the applicant prior to the public hearing, and then IE, and it talks about maximum capacity calculations. So I think we've already put that in there. I think that, you know, the way I envision this is that you're going to ask that for most of your establishments.
But not if they're renewals. My point is, if you're going to have language in there that talks about increasing capacity being something that they'd have to get an engineering report, eventually, we'd want to know what the real number is for these other places and if they change hands as a business or if the license changes hands, not that we have the right to ask, but that they would be required to provide that engineering analysis as a natural juncture because the old, they can't be grandfathered, the business, the building is the only thing that's still there. The ownership is different or the license holder is different.
And I frankly think even the same licenses, I think you could do it for every establishment in your town.
Okay, Joe?
During a renewal.
Yeah.
The scenario that I heard was transfer or new.
Yeah.
We're looking for this for renewals and this for renewals will allow us to require it locally for new applications and transfers.
That would be the trigger point then?
Correct.
Okay.
This is meant for renewals that we're in the middle of right now and to your scenario, we can absolutely build off of this directive to make it part and parcel of the application for transfer or application for new. Madam Chair, if I may. Thank you.
Thank you. Some establishments in town have already gone out and found so-called experts to give them their opinion of their number.
Yeah, they made their calculation, yeah.
And whether or not those experts that they hired to give their number meet the minimum standard for the town, I don't know yet, I don't think anyone knows that yet. Is the town able to, for the, for all of the establishments, the people who have done it and maybe haven't done it right, and the people who are going to want to do it in a very short window of time, is the town able to provide a list of, I guess you would call vendors, to go and do such a calculation? Or is it for the establishment to go find these people on their own?
Joe?
To try to answer the question, what we're saying is, you can't just have anybody, you have to have a Massachusetts licensed professional engineer.
Okay.
Other departments don't, we can't give recommendations under the law-
Right.
But we can tell them entities that have done the work before.
Right.
What this is really trying to avoid is, and we've had this in the past, applicants providing their own data and their own information. What we're looking for here is what every other regulatory department has, we need somebody with skin in the game with a seal on the document.
And I get that, and what I'm looking for not only with, as far as consistency, validity, and reliability of the vendors, but it's a way to facilitate the process for our establishment, so that they're not out there just trying to find, and they-
No, and-
Pay for something, and then they come to the town and say, well, I didn't know, trying to, you know, given the fact that it's a short window, it's November, and that's already here for these establishments.
So for most establishments, when they have questions on their application, either new or renewal, they call your licensing, I can't call her Azarina, she won't let me say that, but you know who we're talking about.
Sure.
She and I would sit down with them, we always recommend that they may want to have a lawyer that can help them with this, but we tell them that, look, if you have a question on this, you might want to get a such and such, if you have a question on that, you may want to get a such and such. What we're looking for tonight under item B is clarity to say, you need a mass licensed registered engineer. Many of them on the applications for new have already done that because they're required to do certain site plans and other documents, so they already have them under contract. And then I think to your point, we can identify a number of other applicants and other vendors that have done it, and they're welcome to inquire with them. Generally speaking, we think we're looking at a cost that, while things being equal, shouldn't come close to $1,000. And again, what this is getting to under item B is if they feel, because now that we've initiated this change, if they feel like the number's too small, you're giving them a mechanism by which they could seek to correct it, or, sorry, not correct it, increase it.
Madam Chair, if I may-
But we need that from the board.
I move that we vote to approve Chapter 138, Section 12 liquor license holders who wish to increase their occupancy number with the town of Howard, that they must provide a capacity site plan from a licensed engineer in the state of Massachusetts.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion?
My only comment, and there's only been, that I know of, two establishments that produced something more than the seating chart, that I know of anyway, but two. To those two establishments, I would imagine staff and licensing will work with them and say, well, that's no good, so that they have the opportunity, before they sign off on their license, to hire the appropriate person to do said thing, and not assume that what they've already handed the fire department is legitimate.
Jeff?
Correct. That's why staff had asked me to have this come before you tonight. It allows us to refine the process.
No other question.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Oh, sorry.
No, it's all right, quick question through you to the town administrator. So just to understand, Joe, by taking this action, is your belief that we now will require a new applicant or a transfer applicant to produce such documentation?
No, what I'm saying is, in past transfer and new applications, they've already had it. They're already providing site plans, seating plans, and all of that, so they would already have it, because they're answering the question of, what is your occupancy?
Okay, all right, thank you for that clarification.
Absolutely, thank you, thanks for the question.
Okay, so motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing that I did not stop.
Fooled you. Madam Chair, was that a five, zero?
Yes, it was, sorry.
Thank you, Attorney Blake.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Glad to see you, everyone.
Thank you, Attorney Blake, have a good night.
Julie.
Thanks.
Madam Chair, item C, approve a special permit application for a one-day wines and malt permit for care for the Cape and Islands, Inc., 100 Independence Drive Hyannis, event to be held at 204 Sisson Road on November 21, 2024, 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And then, five, zero.
Item D, Madam Chair, discussion and vote on the Pine Oaks Village Phase IV letter from the Howard Affordable Housing Trust, authorized Julie Kavanaugh, Chair and Trust member, to execute.
Thank you. So you all have the letter in the packet, so I'm just looking for input from board members in terms of, I had shared with the trust that I would want to bring this back to our board to get everybody's opinion on whether or not I, as the, appointee to the trust, should sign. So I'll start, does anyone want to start, or I'll just go down the line? Pete, you have any comments?
I just, I don't, I guess I don't understand the why. The trust operates, you know, under its own entity, you know, typically we don't come back, you know, for approval on the developer that was selected, or for monies that have been awarded, so I just, I'm confused as to the why.
So I'm bringing it back as only one of five in terms of being that appointed to the trust? So in other words, rather than just say, great, I'm going to sign a letter, I'm bringing it back, Michael was in attendance as well, there was an original draft, I circulated it to everybody, and then there was a revised draft, and at that point, that wasn't in the packet anyway, so there was no vote taken, and I asked at that point that I would like to bring it back. Now, if they were going to sign it at that point, I would have obtained, because I certainly want the feedback. That's the why. Don, do you have any comments? No? Okay. Jeff?
I'm going to wait until I hear Michael.
Thanks. Julie, thank you for bringing this back for our opinion, it's a signatory from the board's representative on that. I understand why you're doing it, I appreciate it. And I do thank the Howard Affordable Housing Trust for their edits, I think from the first, from the first addition to this addition, it's a little less of a sales pitch than the last one, and I appreciate the changes. I don't support it, can't support it, you know, it talks about Pine Oaks being a successful partner in the past, this project does not represent what they've been successful at in the past. This is a much larger project, and then given the fitting in the character of the community, there's nothing in our community that is remotely close to this. That's one, and then the, just in general, I think it's too much of a sales pitch, and though they added in this letter what we're doing outside of Pine Oaks, you know, I see 250 units on top of what we're doing, jamming all the affordable housing into one area in town instead of spreading it out, and this town should at very least, based on percentages across the Cape, we're not doing terrible on housing, and we have a lot of projects going. This project will elevate us over the 10%, and we should have the opportunity to build some housing in other parts of town and spread this out a little bit, and not be forced to get this, to get this. And I can't endorse it or give my approval on it, though I don't need to, and again, I would thank the Howard Affordable Housing Trust for its efforts, they're doing a great job, they have identified projects, they are funding projects, and we are making our way on affordable housing. But as stated in the past, this is way too many units for the town of Howard, with way too many unanswered questions, and I think those questions should be answered before we get there. But more importantly, we should be spreading our housing out and not sticking it in one spot.
Jeff?
I, like Pete, am having a difficult time understanding what the mechanism is for our chair to sign a letter from the housing trust. I read the first pass, this makes me a little more comfortable because it does talk about supporting Pine Oaks' efforts to bring about affordable housing, I did like that part of it, but I'm still having a hard time understanding why the chair of our board's signature would need to be on this.
Well, and that's why I brought it back.
And, so, okay.
Just to be clear, I just want to make sure I'm understanding the question.
Yeah, no, no, I get it.
Are you asking me why I brought it back, similar to Pete's question?
I'm asking why a Select Board's chair's signature needs to be on the housing trust's-
And it doesn't, I could abstain.
So then I wouldn't support you signing this.
Okay.
Would be where I would land.
Okay, Michael?
I think the answer to that question really is because she's our designated Affordable Housing Trust, so she's one of five members.
Right.
So I think that that's the reason why it would be on there. It's Julie's choice on whether or not she wants to abstain or not abstain, but we put her on there as our representative, so she's listed on the Affordable Housing Trust, that's why her signature would be on there.
Oh, is that, I must have misunderstood your question, sorry.
Well, that's the way I, sure.
Yeah, okay.
Is that the interpretation of this? That's-
So, yeah, so I'm one of five appointed-
You're one of, right.
I'm one of five of us, and I'm the appointee to the trust, so I, before I would put my name on the letter, because we are collectively looking at this project, bringing it back to the board.
And does you, sorry.
No, no, go ahead, I-
So let me ask this then, by you signing, does that create the impression that it is the board's will for you to sign? I would assume that that's the yes.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because I think you could look at both ways, you could look at it that way, or you could look at it, because I think the way the revised letter reads is more generic in the sense of what the cause of the trust is, which is to support affordable housing, and the board, you know, each one of us could be nominated to be the person sitting on that, so it's not particularly me, it's just the fact that we have a seat at the table. So do we want to support the efforts of the housing trust versus, and I think you see the way the letter is written, is that, they're talking about what Pine Oaks has put in front, they're talking about the fact that more needs to be answered, and then they're talking about the fact, though, that they are looking forward to working to create more affordable housing. So I think it's, I think it's anemic enough-
Sure.
-to sign, but-
So then, last one, would it be appropriate then for this board to say, if you strike this and add this, and strike this and add that, and bring that back to the trust, and then bring us another copy?
I can only bring it, they don't have to, you know, but yes, you can do that.
Understood, understood. Just trying to get information.
Don, and then I'll go to Richard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm a little concerned about conflating things here. The housing trust is a fiduciary, we feed members to them. Nobody gets identified when they sign anything as Julie Kavanaugh, who may occupy two different roles, but when she's sitting there, she's not the chair of the Select Board. She's a member of the housing trust. The housing trust, as a fiduciary and a freestanding organization, can and probably should weigh in on things of concern to it. I would caution you about actually asking for anybody by vote of the Select Board about whether they do or don't agree with that, because it's a slippery slope. There is, we don't get to dictate the actions of the trust, and they don't get to tell us what we're doing either, so-
No, no.
You may want to keep these things discreet. I wouldn't vote for you as the chair of the Select Board signing it-
No.
But you have the perfect right as a member of the housing trust to sign it as one of the members, and so does Brendan and Larry and everybody else that's on it.
And this is exactly why I'm bringing it back, for the discussion, right? I don't want to, you know, I'm representing us, but to Don's point, I'm not representing us as the chair of the board, I'm a designated person.
And you're not representing us either. We voted to send you there as a member, so any more than the ZBA member would be representing us in an action, they aren't. They are actually fully fledged members who have certain statutory authorities which they are exercising.
And at this point, for me, it's just really to bring it back so that the board is aware.
So, if I may, thank you. That cleared it up, because for me, you being a member of that board and not representing the board, then I would suggest that you don't bring it to us.
Okay.
But I understand why you did.
Yes.
I get it, and it's just becoming more clear to me now as we're having this conversation publicly, and again, I'm not, I'm not saying you should or shouldn't sign the letter, I'm just wondering whether or not by you signing the letter, if it becomes the board's signature.
No, not at all.
And that's all, I wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Richard?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Powell, Richard Waystack, Howard, I don't even know why it's here. Under open meeting law and ethics of the Commonwealth, you are the only one who can dictate whether or not you have a conflict, no one else. No one else can ask for your recusal, no one else can ask you to not sign or sign a document, it is totally under your right, your purview, whether or not to sign, so I'm really not sure why it's even here tonight.
Thank you, Richard.
Teresa Johnson of Howard. It's a little confusing, the way it's-
So I'm just, so this is just a discussion for this board, so we're not talking about this with the public comment.
Mr. Waystack said something.
Except, he's just pointing out the fact that he doesn't understand why we're talking about it, so it's not up for critiquing, is what my point is.
I'm not critiquing it, it just says that you're the chair-
Right.
-of Howard Select Board, which makes it confusing when you read the letter, that you're endorsing it as the chair of the Select Board.
No, that's a good point, so.
That's all I want to say.
Okay, thanks. So I think we can just say that you're aware-
Yep, we saw it, that's fine.
At this point, you saw it, and check the box. Okay, Michael?
Madam Chair, thank you, and to a previous speaker, I certainly would say I appreciate you bringing it before the board.
Thank you.
And I would say at very least, based on all of the comments tonight, at very least, Chair, Howard Select Board should be taken off of that letter.
Right, agreed.
Right?
Yeah.
And to me, it's perception more than anything.
Hundred percent.
You are the chair of the Select Board.
Right.
So, thank you.
No, and I appreciate the comment, so thank you.
Thank you, Professor Johnson, I appreciate it.
Okay, so onward, under Old Business. This is the Select Board policy on public comment, and Danielle tried to incorporate everybody's comments on there. Pete, thank you also for sending out the other examples of, you know, public comment policy. I particularly looked at Pembroke, I just kind of liked the way it read, but some of it, you know, like everything, tweaking, so. Does anyone want to start with any discussions on their feelings beyond comments that incorporated in the draft? Michael?
I thought that going to 20 minutes was great, I thought the separating out department heads, so that we're 20 minutes to the public is great, and then an extension at the discretion of the chair.
Mm-hmm.
So I thought we nailed it on that. The only piece that I see, I mean, I think we're all fairly in agreement based on the comments on who commented, the only other piece was the enforcement piece, really didn't go anywhere.
What letter?
Does Howard, that would be number 11, enforcement?
Yeah.
Commented, you know, at the bottom of all of our comments just says, does Howard have a code of conduct for appointment, appointed and elected officials? I know we do for the elected, at least it's in my binder.
We'll leave it at that.
Hundred percent sure about it.
Bo shit you would, Jerry.
But what, I don't see many other edits, Madam Chair, that needed to be made, except for the enforcement piece, I believe we should have them. And Pete, thank you for the homework, I wish I had your time that day. Appreciate it.
Okay, Don?
Just going to state it up ahead, Jeff and I have had a conversation about this, but I'm a pretty staunch civil libertarian, and this is a, this is a solution in search of a problem. I mean, I can't think of the last time we wanted to shut somebody down and tell them to get out of the room and escort them out by the police. I've been around long enough, well, Lincoln and I started here, I've been around long enough where I know how things can, first of all, this is at the beginning of the meeting, but there's also plenty of things that we do that have discussion that we have allowed historically throughout the meeting, things that are on the agenda. historically throughout the meeting, the things that are on the agenda. I have seen, notably with the Headwaters Wind Turbines, where there were people who were begging to be listened to in the head of the meeting, and they were shut down because they were repetitive, and you're not on the agenda. And then it was a tautology. The Chair at the time would never put it on the agenda, so there couldn't be a robust discussion of anything. And then it went back around to another meeting where like 20 people would show up from Headwaters, they'd try to get to the mic, and the Chair would say, what do you want to talk about? And they were talking about the wind turbines, and it was ruled out of order. In the wrong hands, I see anything that we do in this area to be excessive. Almost anything in any, any given meeting can offend somebody. But in terms of what we're really trying to get at is somebody who's totally off the wall, somebody whose behavior borders on threatening to people. I'd be hard put over the last 25 years to identify more than four or five of those incidences. And to come up with a policy for that, that I'm not sure how it can even be used, if not misused, it concerns me. So I belong to fire, is another thing that I could divulge. I really seriously believe in people's rights to be able to redress in front of their public bodies. After all, their, their power doesn't derive from us, our power derives from them. And I don't see the need for this, is, is where I'm landing.
Okay, thank you. Pete?
Thanks. Thank you, Madam Chair. I think in my response to you, Madam Chair, I indicated that I, I tend to think it's a little overkill. However, with some of the recommended edits and suggestions, I'm more in line to support it than not. And Michael, in this particular document, we have Section H enforcement is stricken in totality. You know, again, I don't, I don't see the need for it, especially the way it's written, but I don't even see the need for it to be included. And then under public body response, Section G, Item 4 was stricken in totality as well. My thoughts on that were related to that. Similar languages throughout the document that I don't think it needed to be spelled out in that one particular area. But, but I think more importantly, it goes back to providing the, the public with an opportunity to speak, whether we agree or disagree. And the, the opportunity to put things on the agenda as we move forward, which is why the recommendation to not just have the sole discretion of the Chair, but the discretion of the Chair or the majority of the public body to, to bring things to a future agenda. So, again, pretty much spelled out in, in my edits, but that's, that's where I am with it.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Michael?
If I may, Pete, I totally agree with you. My, my comments were, the whole section needs to be tweaked, so deletion is fine with me. So.
Thank you.
I guess on, so, sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead.
I just, I'm just thinking about that, because I, I had a lot of questions on that part myself. But now, thinking about what Don just said, I'm wondering if it, if, if it should be in there in the sense of just to make it clear that if people aren't satisfied with the public comment, that they have a means to address that. But I suppose people would know that anyways if they wanted to, so. I'm, I'm fine with leaving it out. I'm just thinking it live, which doesn't mean I'm thinking much, so. Go ahead.
Yeah, if I could add, I, I would disagree with Don, and Don said that we've, you know, we've had a couple of conversations about this. I, I don't view this as just a way for this public body to deal with abuse and conduct and such. I view it as more of a procedure. There was a lot in here that, as I was reading through it, I realized that we actually breach, which is we go back and forth. And I think this is a really good way to set the framework for a successful public comment each and every Monday night. To Don's point about trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist, well, I'd, I'd much rather be proactive than reactive. And I think that town in Middle Massachusetts, I think it was Southborough or Northborough, I bet they wish they had a policy. And we do a lot of things that are proactive. And, and I would prefer that this Board continue to do things proactively than reactively. So, you know, the First Amendment is the linchpin of, of these meetings. And, and I'm going to make this real clear upfront, this is not you, okay? But I also view this as if there was a Chair who wanted to limit public comment, that this policy prevents that from happening. And I'm, I, again, I don't want to make anyone think that I'm, I'm trying to move this forward, because we have a Chair who limits public comment. That's not the case at all. So I, I, I believe it solidifies the act of public comment and gives everybody the fair and same opportunity to speak. So I'm clearly for it. And then, you know, the, the addition of the, the changes that were made, the deletions that were made, I think were great. And I thank the Board for, you know, Pete, for sending us all that information. That was fantastic. So, yeah, I, I would support, I'd support this for sure.
Okay. So in terms of what we have right now, and, and all collectively agreeing, like 20 minutes seems good, and?
I don't agree with that, by the way.
Oh, no.
But, but I'm okay.
Well, no, well, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Like, do we want like one more swing at this in terms of like a clean draft that we can just take one more look at and make any changes and then vote it? Because I think right now, we have something with everybody's comments all over. It's not 100 percent clear.
I personally would like to see a clean, clean copy of the policy with all the changes.
And then we'll vote it.
And then that would be a reading, would be the first reading.
Right, that's, well, right.
Correct.
So that's what I mean, is to like clean it up, have the first reading. Any other edits?
I would only say that Selectman Handler brought it up, but what would your proposal be? Because why bring it back, change it, and then bring it back for a first reading two weeks later? So if you don't agree with 20 minutes, what do you agree with?
So if we're going to limit speakers to three minutes, I don't see a need for a total, a total time and public comment. Just my opinion.
Yeah, no, no, I hear you, but I guess the only thing, the only reason I think that can make sense is sometimes public comment can go on forever. And the only other part of that is, we do meet weekly. You know, some towns meet every other week. I, I could understand not limiting them, because, you know, every other week doesn't give the same amount of people the opportunity to come.
I think back to the Special Friends Cafe.
Yeah.
And if we had 20 minutes, that was, that was a wonderful experience for, for me and I think many people here. And it, it would have been very difficult to look at the, the group of people who came here and say, you know, we've got other people who want to speak about something completely different, so you now all don't get to speak. I, I think that would be a really hard thing for me to do.
Well, that's a good point. Maybe, maybe it could be, you know, again, back to trying to get a final draft. You know, maybe, can we say something?
Madam Chair?
Yeah?
We, we have language in there, and no disrespect, I understand exactly where you come from, Jeff, but it says, at the discretion of the Chair.
Well, I was just going to say.
It says, at the discretion of the Chair, based on, based on the agenda, right?
And I'm good with that.
So if we have, right, if we have something crazy that night, and we have to keep it to the, and I'm happy to go to 21 minutes, if you want to go three minutes apiece, right? Seven people at 21 minutes. But in any event, I, you know, we get that window of opportunity in case the Chair needs to hold it to that, and we move forward.
It gives us a guideline, I guess is the best way to say it.
Yeah.
Don?
And not that I'm changing my mind here, but as long as you're talking about things that are rel, ha ha, relative to this, it sort of has a presupposed outcome, that the people who come in on a particular subject all know each other and have picked lots, and you're the one who's going to speak for them. That isn't how this normally works. And you may very well find yourself in a circumstance that you want to consider with this, that the first person up is that person that everybody says, oh, they always speak forever. And then that's the only person that can talk. I think it's really important that you consider that, because they may not be represented, even, even representative of the conversation, even if they're the first person. There's got to be some way that you can wiggle that around, because.
If I may, Madam Chair.
Sure.
Through you, Don. Pete, other than his joke, I think said, said it perfectly. He said, you know, it's at the discretion of the Chair, and everybody gets three minutes. So everybody gets the same playing field, but at the discretion of the Chair, she can, or he can put a, put an end to public.
You do understand what I'm saying.
I, I 100 percent do. I don't think there's a, a perfect solution to this, but I think having guardrails and a procedure for everyone to follow and feel comfortable to come here and speak in front of the Select Board, where they're, they know that they're not going to get told they can't talk anymore, I think is important.
I liked Pete's joke.
Thank you, Michael.
Really?
Okay. All right, so I'm just going to.
Bring it back clean.
Bring it back clean.
Yeah.
And that'll be the first. Okay. The vote to adopt the Town of Howard, Pete, I'm just spelling P E L, too lazy to read it.
Project eligibility letter.
Thank you for doing that. I, I could go to you first, or I can go?
Certainly.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What I'd like to do is identify changes or additions to the letter. Since your last view of it, I worked with staff on some areas, but also relied upon the comments provided from the Board members, and I thank you for that, and I hope I've captured them. You can see that the letter has now gone to a fifth page, so we've added more substance and content to it. If you look on page two, I think I've broadened the discussion about many of the commitments that the Town of Howard has and is making on affordable housing. I think most notably undersite appropriateness. You can see that there's three new paragraphs that expand upon the numerous issues that traffic offers as a problem with regard to that proposal. Refined the language under building massing and added more language. I think topography and environmental impacts were impacted slightly, and then refined and referred to the assessing director's commentary about site control. I can certainly go even deeper if you'd like, but those are really the additions since the last draft that you saw.
Thank you, Joe. Board members have comments. Jeff?
The only thing I'll say is to the Town Administrator, I think you captured exactly where I was going perfectly, and I appreciate your effort.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Anybody else? Pete, Don? No? Michael?
I know you'd be shocked, but only one edit. I think it's important that this Board's signature's be on there as well. I certainly appreciate Joe's being on there. He captured all the information from the public and from us, but I think they should see the Board's signatures on there as well. So it should be all of our signatures.
So adds luck board signatures, yeah. And I just, and I'm sure you've already caught it, Joe, there's just like a gap on page.
Yeah, some edits there.
Yeah, just a little.
Just a couple.
Yeah.
Spacing things.
Page three, just spacing. That's the only one I caught.
When does this do?
November 1st.
Friday.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Thank you.
I move to vote to adopt the Town of Howard's project eligibility letter, response to Pine Oaks Village Phase Four, 51 Queen Anne Road, as presented, but with Select Board McKeskey's addition.
Have members, all members sign.
All members sign.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Joe?
So I want to make sure I change the tensing, and, excuse me, not the tensing, the pronouns. For example, we are writing on behalf, we are writing as the Howard Select Board, et cetera. So are those corrections embedded in the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. I would recommend as much as possible, original ink signatures, and so I could have this available tomorrow night.
Okay.
At the community engagement forum. That way we can make sure everyone signs it, and you get to see it before you sign it.
Great.
Thank you.
And if I could, with, with the proposed modifications, just in the end, Joe, if all signatures could be on the same page, so the Board's on the same page as yours.
Left, right.
I, so you're looking for my signature to be there as well?
I thought that was Michael's motion.
That was Jeff's motion.
I'm sorry, Jeff's motion. But we, we were going to be included with your signature.
Okay, all right.
I just want them on the same page.
Thank you, I didn't get that?
Okay.
Thank you. Yep.
Okay, that was it, right?
I guess I could leave.
Yeah, I know. No, we didn't vote it yet. All in favor?
Aye.
I need to catch that.
Did you say aye?
Yeah.
Five, zero.
Second.
Yeah, that's right. It's been a long night. All right.
Madam Chair, if I could, under contracts, I believe the action's unnecessary in the sense that we have the contract, or we have the engagement letter from Markham. Select Board Vice Chair Handler was able to identify a funding source that was confirmed last week. This falls within my authority, and we haven't done the pre and post procurement. However, I think Board members wanted to discuss it generally, so.
Okay. Any comments from Board members? Jeff?
I'll open with Pete. Pete, you had a good suggestion, good question, when we had spoken.
Yeah, I'm trying to find the relevant spot, but I guess my first question would be, we, we found a funding source, and that funding source is?
Don.
I already pay for liquor licenses for charitable events, so why not?
Beyond Mr. Howell, Select, excuse me, CPC Chair Dave Nixon confirmed that the administrative funds that are available were authorized by CPC that he used.
Thank you for that. I forgot I'm 300 pages behind, because of all this stuff, but that's why I couldn't find it. But the, the general sense of my, my statement to, to Selectman Handler was, I don't believe it indicated that there'd be a report furnished back to this Board, only to the C, the CPC or the, yeah, I believe that's, I'm sorry, I didn't have it ready, but I believe it, they were just going to report back to the CPC with their findings. And I'd ra, not that I'm opposed to them getting a report, I would just like us to also get a copy of the report.
Joe, go ahead.
Thank you. That's sort of the basis for my commentary. We typically would never accept just one party's engagement or services. So what the town would be doing is responding with our own Chapter 30B contract. We make their engagement letter one of the exhibits in our letter, but we clearly put out the scope that we're looking for, and I have that from the vote of the Select Board. That's why I would recommend that you not engage based on the engagement letter. We'll be, we'll have a document, a Chapter 30B contract, that is the town's language that corresponds with procurement. We have a scope of services that may differ slightly from Markham, in the sense that this engagement is for the Select Board and for the benefit of the Select Board, and you can then disperse it with everyone else. So you should not adopt the engagement letter, because it doesn't have the town's wishes.
So you're, you're saying do not support this letter tonight?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. That it's going to be an actual 30B contract process.
And when does, so does that require our approval?
It does not, but I could also present.
Because it's within the, because it's within the, okay.
Correct. And I would also be able to present it as early as next week, what was executed.
Okay.
All right, understood.
So no action, obviously.
That's my recommendation.
Yep.
The only question was, it, it spoke about the audit process, and it spoke about the CPT forms that were submitted, and that being a starting point, and then going back to articles and expenses. So my question to them would be, and through you, or whomever's going to deal with them, what if all CPT forms have been submitted incorrectly over the past four years, and we're starting with incorrect information? I assume they're auditors, so they're going to figure that out. But it does say a starting point is CPT forms.
We, we would actually expect that. We're not entirely certain that those errors existed in the manner that the forms were filed. So that is a great starting point for them, because that's the first question they have to unravel, is were they in error? How many of them, over what period of time? And then how do we correct it?
Thank you.
Julie, the, the, thank you, Madam Chair. The only thing I'd like to say is publicly thank Eric Kinsha for the effort, and how responsive, and how he and I, well, he did a great job working with me and getting this taken care of, so that we can try to get this done, you know, potentially before the end of the year.
Right.
That's, that's the goal. So I, I just wanted to thank Eric for his effort.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other discussion on that? Okay. Town Administrator's report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a contract to announce, and this is regarding carpet replacement at both Community Center and Town Hall. So. So Mannington Commercial has agreed to the Town's contract for carpet tiles, associated adhesives. The contract amount is for $55,628.14. The funding for this comes from the 2018 Annual Town Meeting, where that article approved funding for the replacement of carpeting in Town Hall and the Community Center under that article, that year of Article 10. Sean Libby, Facilities Manager, has utilized the state contract to procure this. This allows us for direct purchase without the need to advertise or contain sealed bids, streamlining the process. And as in this case, it generally results in a better price for the Town. The original article had funding upwards of $130,000, so we're using a portion of that. The remainder of the article balance will then be used to hire the contractor who will install the carpeting. So this is for the materials that will then be installed. This requirement also require, the require, excuse me, the hiring of the contractor is essentially considered to be a construction job, so that will be done by prevailing wage and all of those other things. However, this is a great step in the right direction to get the materials in so we can then proceed to the installation. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Joe. Select Board Members' report?
Just wondered, do we have any update on that search firm for the Finance Director?
Thank you, no. I realize that I still haven't heard back, so I will call them again tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you, bud. I would have thought by now we definitely would have heard something.
Thank you.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Also, an update, have we come any closer to any kind of resolution between the current vendor at Cranberry Valley and the restaurant and the prior one? I think it was like $20,000 worth of equipment that was at, that was being discussed.
I was at the golf course on Friday, I believe. I haven't heard anything updated, so I'll check where counsel is on the agreement for that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Don. Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. As I say sometimes, heroes are all around us. Katie Keith, a Harwich Elementary teacher, somehow got the idea that it would be a good thing to bring a bunch of third graders, first graders, second graders, and kindergartners to see the wild robot in Dennis at the movie theater. And I dropped both my kids off happily and I got them both back. So they came back and they had a great time, and I just can't say enough about Mrs. Keith and her idea to do this on a Sunday afternoon, so.
The coming back thing was a good thing, then?
Yeah.